Okay, everyone, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting of the SU Board to order at the Essex High School Library at 6:30 on Monday, March 30th, 2015. And first item on our agenda is just to see if there's any visitors. We've heard. Seeing none. The next thing is to welcome some guests from Montpelier who have taken some time out of their schedules to be available to answer some questions, give some explanation of some of the updates that have occurred in Montpelier. So I'd like, if you guys could introduce yourselves.
I'm Linda Myers. I represent Essex Town. It's sitting in eight, one?
Tim Jarman from eight-two, Essex Junction.
Paul Dane, also from eight-two in Essex Junction.
Bob Baker up in Westford, eight-three.
And we have a couple other folks that are here from the Essex Town School Board. Kim.
And I apologize.
Dan. As well as Superintendent Andrews. I know some folks had an opportunity to maybe come up with some questions. I don't know if anything was forwarded on from you folks.
The only thing we got was just an overview from Grant. And then with a proposed spending cap implications. And then I got letters from Mark.
We all got those.
So, Michael. My name is Mark Dropp. I'm the board chair from Westford. We generally covered legislative updates as part of our SU agendas, predominantly from help from Martha Heath, who was the Westford rep before Bob. But for this particular meeting, we felt that there was such a great deal of new information, proposed changes to education within our districts in the state, that we wanted to try to understand a brief overview of what those changes were, what potential implications they could have for us. So you see that we did try to distribute some data ahead of time so we could ground the board members and our guests and that. And then we'd like to try to get, I guess, your input, your feedback on those pieces of legislation, where, how we got here, what we hope to accomplish, and what you support or don't. Offer a time for some input from our side of things, what that actually means to our schools, how we might react to them, and then cover some Q and A. That, I believe, would take us well past the amount of time we've scheduled for, but I think really answers some of the questions that I know my town is asking about what our next steps could be should some of these bills come to pass.
Well, let me first point out that if we're going to talk about any of the education bills, the expert is here, since he sits on the Education Committee. The other three of us, as Martha knows, we are involved in our own individual committees that may not necessarily know as much about this bill until it actually hits the floor and there's a discussion, even though we all know what's coming up and we know what it does. But I will say that Tim is the expert. So your questions, I think, should first of all be directed to Tim.
That sounded like a setup to me.
Let me be clear that, you know, first of all, thank you very much for joining us. And we're hoping to take from this opportunity the chance to share some of our concerns in both operating districts, looking forward, understanding the concerns of our citizens and taxpayers, and most importantly, our students. Putting that all together and being able to communicate one-to-one with our legislators is, I think, a huge benefit for us. It really cuts out a lot of the interpretation we sometimes see through news sources or whatever, and we can get a more nuanced take, I think.
Can I help if I gave an overview of Queens?
Maybe before that, then we could have folks introduce themselves so that we know who's here in the house with us tonight. This is a CCSU board meeting that's comprised of three members of each of our local boards. So we have three members from Essex Junction. When they introduce themselves, they'll identify which board they're from. Three from Westford and three from U46. And we extended the invitation on the place to see Superintendent Andrews, who is listening to Dan here tonight as well.
Sure, I'll start. I'm Michael Smith. I'm the board chair for the Prudential Committee.
And you.
And also for the SU.
And I'm Judy DiNava, Superintendent.
I'm Jack Blandorf on the U46 Board from Essex Junction.
Tim Cameron on the Prudential Committee, Essex Junction.
Aaron Knox, U46 Board from Essex Junction.
Marla Durham. I'm on the Prudential Committee.
And I'm Brian Donnie. I'm the Chair of the U46 School Board and Resident of Essex Junction.
Martha Heath, Westford School Board.
Mark Dropp, Chair of Westford School Board and Clerk of the SU Board.
Al Bombardier, Union 46, Essex Town Rep.
Let me go ahead. I'm going to pass these around. This is what all the members are going to get. The committee did an overview of eight-three sixty-one. It's a long and involved bill, and a little history, which many of you know, because I know you've had, probably all heard from Secretary Holcomb, about some of the issues in education. Some of them are not new. Some of them are a little bit newer in terms of the rapidity of the decline in the number of students. But there's really a sense that she has, and people in the Education Department, that the way we are structured statewide really isn't conducive right now to the best outcomes for students. This debate's been going on for 200 years in Vermont. It'll go on probably for another 200 years after we're done. Being on the Essex Historical Society, I know that we once had 14 school districts in Essex. And that was at the very beginning. So what we've done this year was build on, as you know, last year with H883, which didn't pass. That was a bill which would have reduced the number of school districts and engendered a lot of debate. But I think as that debate started, as a result of that bill, which didn't make it all the way through, a lot of districts did start talking about ongoing conversations about creating enlarged school districts. So we've gone further this year. We had another bill four or five years ago. Was it 153, I think, Act 153, that was promoting school districts very voluntarily to do that? And there hadn't been, there weren't many that took the bait on that one. So even with the incentives. So I'm glad to see that Essex, Westford, and Essex Junction are again back at the study. I personally hope that it'll be productive. What, 361, I think, to me, the biggest piece is that it does move us toward enlarged school districts, but not only districts. And just to tell you where we are, there's an amendment that's coming up tomorrow, which is going to make that piece of the bill a little more flexible. We've gotten a lot of input. We just get continual input. To put this bill together, there was, there's been over 200 pieces of information. It's all on the House Education website. There've been all kinds of proposals, some to completely overhaul the way we fund education. That didn't get a majority viewpoint in our committee anyway, so that mostly what you see us trying to address is sort of the, not the funding structure, but getting at total costs. And that's one of the most controversial proposals. Obviously, you're aware of the cap proposal. So, and that has undergone a lot of changes from start to finish as well. So basically, the sheet you're seeing, creating larger districts is a big thing, supporting districts that are reorganizing, restructuring the grants to small schools, that's been very controversial. We've seen a number of small schools closing, and I think the commissioner, the secretary's view on that is that by creating these enlarged districts, we will have more of an opportunity for local communities to decide on how to potentially save those small schools, rather than just go as we're going and do nothing and watch them close because they don't have enough students. So I really, a lot of people, there's a lot of controversy about that issue, but I, personally, I believe that very strongly, that that will be more possible to do. The spending cap, let me talk a little bit about that, and others can weigh in on that as well. But very clearly, I think I'd probably speak unanimously here, but I'll talk, won't talk for everybody else. We all heard a lot of complaints about the property tax and how it, I've heard in Essex Junction, it is driving people out of the village. And I know that some people have left already, can't afford their property taxes. So it's a complex topic because of income sensitivity and a whole bunch of other things, and why the costs go up and the taxes go up. But that was something that, there was a strong feeling that this legislature must address that, and that we got a clear message from the voters that Montpelier should address that issue this year. What we've learned in doing this proposal is that it's a very difficult thing to do, and a lot of people resent the fact that Montpelier's involved in this at all, and that why isn't that just a function of local spending? So lots of discussion on this issue. The idea of this is to cap the trend in long-term spending at, basically at the rate of inflation, so to bend the curve on spending overall. Spending overall has been more than, I think it's about 4% this year, and it's been rising faster than I think local income levels can support. We actually put in a moratorium on spending this year, and I know that we haven't been good on that in the past, and there have been a lot of mandates coming in past years. Well, there's a whole bunch of other things, and I just don't want to talk at you, so could certainly, the piece I'll be reporting happens to be about out-of-state tuitions. And this bill has another somewhat controversial piece of stopping in-state money from going out-of-state, except to border schools where most of our kids from the borders go. And there's always going to be cases where one size doesn't fit all with that either, but it was pretty stunning to me to look at some of the private schools that some communities are sending their dollars out of state to when it could be staying in-state to support their local public schools. So that'll be a contentious issue as well. There's a whole bunch of them. I expect the bill probably will come on the floor Wednesday. It was supposed to come up tomorrow, but I think it's going to. We're hearing amendments in committee tomorrow, and there's a lot of them, so I think taking a little more time and getting that part right. Then we'll have a debate on the floor about it. There'll be all kinds of amendments to it, to remove some of the sections, to add to some others. And then it goes to the Senate if it passes the House. And again, there'll be a whole nother debate about that, and the Senate, I'm sure, will have their own ideas and many changes with it. So it's a long process. I would urge people not to get too-too hung up on any one particular piece. There'll be plenty of time for more input after the floor debate on the House is done. So I'll leave it at that for now. Anybody else?
Yeah, as I say, has anyone had anything, or before I open it up, any questions?
I don't think so. I think, I think Tim did a good job. You know, as I said, he's the one, it's his committee that's really going over everything. We'll have this on our desks probably Wednesday. And we're, by the way, planning an all-day session Wednesday and Thursday. We usually meet at, start meeting on the floor at one, and we're starting at 9:30. So we're anticipating a long discussion for two days on this, as we were there last week for the revenue bill and the budget bill. So, you know, I've been hearing from people, I've been hearing from Mark and other superintendents in other school districts, I'm sure Paul and Bob are also hearing. And we understand where, we sort of understand where you all are coming from. And I usually don't make a decision on how I vote until I'm actually sitting there and listening to the debate. I may have some ideas of my own when I go on the floor, but until I hear the debate, and as Tim said, there will be a lot of amendments. So whether this changes a lot, or not at all, or a little bit, will be all a matter of what happens in the two days that we'll be discussing this. So I think that's my position right now. I think, for me, I'd like to hear some of your comments, and specifically geared to what you don't like, and I'm pretty sure I know what you don't like, but anyway. So let me.
Yeah, with that, I'd like to, the questions. Mark?
So if you're not familiar with Westford, our budget was defeated this year. We were proposing a tax decrease of 1.2 percent, I'm sorry, a budget decrease of 1.2 percent because of our number of pupil change. That was resulting in a tax increase of just under 5% for homestead tax rate and over nine for income sensitivity. Almost all of the proposed changes that I'm seeing here would only make that problem even worse. Unable to pass a decreasing budget is a very big challenge. We did a great deal of audits to understand where our staffing was, where our class sizes were. We are well above the state average in class size. We're almost at maximum in most cases. We have a staff-to-student ratio that is well above the state average. All of the metrics that we've looked at to address, well, where are we failing here, are looking very good. So I'm challenged to understand how most schools won't arrive to the same conclusion eventually, especially given that we already know that there's going to be inflationary increases, universal pre-K increases, and salaries most likely are going to be moving upwards as well as health benefits. So if we can't find a way out today, this doesn't seem to change the calculus much for us. What are your thoughts on how this could affect towns like Westford?
Do you want to have my first thought? You're from there. I understand what you're saying, and I don't know the really answer to it. But I will strive to get more of a one-to-one relationship between what happens to a budget and what happens to the tax rate. And I think a lot of that has to take place in Montpelier. The one-year lag bothers me that we have, so there's always some adjustments. And I understand the difficulty, at least in a steady state, of trying to keep up with inflation, however you define inflation, particularly given 80% is wages, and so wages, we all hope, will increase faster than inflation. So that's a difficult task in itself. But I think my goals are to try to, it's transparency. I want people to walk into the voting booth and understand what they're voting for. I want towns to have, I ascribe to local control, and I want to allow towns to do what they want, but they need to understand that they need to bear the cost. And those are sort of my guiding principles. And I do understand, I've heard from Mark, from Martha, and I've also heard from, I think, the School Board Association and several supervisory districts, that they really do not like the cap at all. And I understand why they might. I guess I'm waiting to hear what this debate is going to be and what the amendments are going to be. Well, we'll start hearing about it tomorrow. I think initially, the education bill was going to come to the floor tomorrow, but I understand now it's postponed to Wednesday. So it will be an interesting week, as last week was.
Don't go ahead.
Well, I just, I want to add on to what Mark said. The Secretary of Education, when she testified before Ways and Means, said, "Please be sure you're not doing harm." And I'm telling you that the cap proposal could do real harm in Westford. Because we've already reduced our staff, we've done the right things, in my opinion. And I really, as you know, because we've written to you, Tim and Bob would have preferred that you really focus on ratios and have the policies that you came up with, look at that as the driver. That's where the money is. And schools that are running classes with a teacher and five kids or nine kids, it's not efficient. Now, I know your hope is that the larger districts will help to bring that under control, and I think that's likely. But capping now has the potential to do real harm to students. Because even if we froze teachers' salaries, even if we, you know, did all those kinds of things, we're not at a place where we can reduce teachers. And that's the only way you save money. And so I would ask you to think carefully. I understand the politics of it, and I understand the message that you would like to send. I think there is collateral damage to kids in sending that message. And I would ask you to think carefully about that.
Let me just respond. We had a lot of testimony. We looked at ratios really hard, and we just couldn't get to a point of setting a number. I keep recalling the statement, somebody said, "When you've seen one school district in Vermont, you've seen one school district in Vermont," that they're so different that trying to enforce any kind of ratios would lead to so many unintended consequences of grades being put together to reach that. I mean, there was all kinds of negatives, and I think the secretary sort of warned us away from doing that right now. Not that we won't get there, but I don't disagree that that would have been the way to go. And taking caps aside, I mean, I am a strong proponent of merger. I do think in the long run, for Westford, that probably it would be a good thing being part of this district. My hope would be that, and this came out in our committee real strongly, that people need to change their definition of local in this state. That local is not now just your town, it's your region. I mean, look at the way we shop, you know, and think about, we don't just stay in Essex or in Westford, and that if this was part of one district, that we would probably do everything we could to help the Westford school is, that's my guess. I mean, it's my guess that that same thing would happen in a lot of other areas of the state too, where they wouldn't be out to just try to close that school. They would be trying to help it as much as they can. So I fully get the cap proposal. I fully understand that there's another problem, even with merger, with Westford, with the hold harmless provisions and the timing of that. I'm hoping to work on that. One of the problems is every single area in the state has some particular exemption or something that they want, and there's some pushback on some of that as well. So very difficult questions, but we hear you.
Just want to thank you all for coming tonight. We appreciate it. My question is, there was some discussion when this bill was first evolving about trying to, like, a moratorium or put some kind of a time limit on unfunded mandates? And I don't see anything on this description of what you're working on right now that really.
It's in the bill on the first, it's in the bill on the first page at the bottom, second from the bottom.
Okay, so that, is that true specifically?
It's true next year. You may see some amendments to extend that.
Further.
Because I think what, like, what I've seen with this, we're struggling with, is when, we're almost getting mixed messages from Montpelier, you know? So cut spending, cut spending, but by the way, you need to do this, you need to do this, you need to do this. And by the way, we don't really give you a clear description or idea or plan for how you're going to pay for some of these things. So I think what's hard is there's just really kind of the push and pull that goes on. So I think, you know, it would just be nice to even just get a little break for a while from some of that, so that we can kind of get our feet unreels.
Well, that's clearly the feeling. Thank you.
I certainly will support no unfunded mandates.
And I think that is something, not just that having to do with education, but many other issues that we face there. And think about whatever group it is, whether it's a school, or whether it's healthcare, or whether it is whatever, that the state continuously puts these unfunded mandates, "We're telling you to do it, but oh, by the way, we're not giving you money to do it." And so I think in the last year or so, I think more and more of us are saying, "Wait, we have to, we have to really, you know, it might be a really great idea, but if the state can't help out, then, you know, and let's see." I know we have asked for, whenever a bill comes up in front of us, we've often asked for a fiscal note. We've asked the Joint Fiscal Office to come up and say, "Here's the bill, and if enacted, this is what it's going to cost," so that we have an idea of what we're voting on. But as far as the mandates for school districts, absolutely, I have for years said too much without us doing anything.
It's true. Many other things are absolutely, they're very beneficial. They're wonderful ideas, and they're wonderful programs, so, but just, it kind of all has to flow together.
Right.
Mark?
Yeah, that's, I think, I'm certainly in favor of the statement of no unfunded mandates. Sounds great. I'm super concerned, in an environment in which we need to retool, redesign, and re-prepare ourselves for the education our kids need to be successful in the future, that no unfunded mandates is a great way for us to just stagnate, to stop to innovate, stop responding. You know, the unfunded mandates, I love it. You know, it's apple pie and motherhood. Everybody wants to say it right now. But it is the only way we've moved our educational system in Vermont in a single step forward. You know, otherwise, we'd been 256 at a time, moving in one direction or another. So, you know, what would be great is to, is to look at them, discard those that are costly and ineffective, but to ensure that we find funding for those requirements to prepare our kids.
But then my question for you is, find funding. Now, where do we find the funding from? Do we ask our taxpayers to add more to the cost, to their education? Or do we turn to the state of Vermont, which at the present time is having a hard time coming up with funding for a whole bunch of different things? You know, when we're looking at that $113 million budget gap, the state of Vermont is not in a whole big position to come up with funding for mandates, whichever. So I think that there needs to be some thought about who pays for, if we're going to come up with a plan, who pays for them? Do we turn around and ask the residents of our communities to do it on their, you know, with their property taxes? I work on a totally different bill, and yet there's some things in that, in that bill also, that I have to look at and say, "Okay, it's not necessarily, it's not the property taxes that you're paying for education, it's your other taxes that you're paying to the state of Vermont, and how much is that going towards what it is I'm working on?" And so it's, I understand what you're saying, but it is, right now, we are in a situation in this state that I think the only thing that we can go with right now is at least looking at unfunded mandates for, you know, and this is saying through 2016, but if it is amended, let's see how long it is, and say, "Let's wait." But as for educating our kids for the future, there are a whole bunch of things that I'm sure I would like sure I would like to think about, you would like to think about, you know, the whole issue of, of information technology and how our kids learn, and those kinds of things. I think that's extremely important to think about. But we are, as, as, as a citizenry in Vermont, in a position right now that we have to kind of say, "Give us some time to kind of get back on our feet."
Can I, I want to respond, because I'm really glad you said that, because a lot of the things that, in my time, that we have mandated have been great things, and part of them are mandating culture change. I just think back in the last 10 years, the bullying thing, you remember the suicides in Essex Junction? All right, that was an unfunded mandate. Suicide prevention in the health curriculum, that was an unfunded mandate that came right out of Essex Junction. Concussions, another one. This year, the hazing situation in Milton, there's a bill that's being considered, that has an Essex connection to it too. So some of these things, you know, or we are trying to change the way people think about a lot of different things, and some of them have had financial implications, some have been able to be put in there, but, so, you know, it, it is hard to say what we, I could think of some things that we'd have to mandate, you know, but I think it's good to send this message that, you know, if we're going to ask for more austerity at the local level, then we need to practice that in Montpelier.
I also think that we use an overused expression these days, "Ask him skin in the game." People in Montpelier need to have appreciation for what these things cost. We have to set priorities. So it's easy to, the easy way out of Montpelier is to vote, it's a debate, it's a no-brake, almost no-brake. So I, I do think that we just, we need to, and education ought to be priority number one in this state. And so I, you know, you know, if we concentrate on those things as the highest priorities, I, I think we'll, we'll get those things. If we're talking about concussions, that's a statewide issue, and it ought to be addressed at the state. It isn't something that just should concern Essex Junction, it should concern Kanan.
Tim?
Okay, so I'm two-thirds happy and one-third unhappy. There are six, there are six of these bullets, and I'm going to talk about the unhappy part. There are six of these bullets that apply to us, the rest don't. Either because we don't have small schools, or some of them are directed in AOE, you know, so there's really only six things in here that directly apply to us.
I agree that they all apply to us, because this is...
But I can't comment on it. Of course they all apply to us, because we're all in it together, and I support that.
And also because we're a large school, and I take a lot of heat down there from the small schools particularly about, you're the ones driving the cost, you know, so...
Yes, exactly, right. So, so, but it's about what it is, and it's about what it does to kids in Essex. So, temporary capping the spending, you know we are paying, we are more than the state average, that gives us less than a 2% cap, right? So that, it's going to be under that. There is no way I can support this unless you give us freedom, you give us relief on how we negotiate salaries. We negotiate, we are, we are totally restricted, we have no freedom, right? The way negotiations happen is by comps. They're totally happened by comps. So when you do the comps, all the comps are over 3%. 80% of our thing is salaries and benefits. What do you want us to do? There's only one thing that it means, we do have freedom to do, is cut programs and, and rev teachers. That's exactly what that means we will have to do. There's no, given the situation, it's very simple, all the comps are over 3%, that means it's got to give up 3% on salary increases. We don't have freedom to really negotiate around that realistically, right? So what we can do is cut programs. So what you're saying is, that's what's going to happen if this passes, that's basically what's going to happen in our town, is that's what we're going to do. And we will meet that number, because it will be law, and we'll have to meet it, but that's basically what we're going to have to do. Okay, maybe there's a little mishmash around that, and not totally, but that's going to be part of it, definitely, right? And then on the back one is the property tax rate. This one is less of an issue, I think, but it's a huge jump year over year when you guys jerk the base rates around so much. And so that makes it a huge problem for us when we come back and we say, "Oh, well, here's the budget, it's pretty good, and, oh yeah, by the way, your taxes are going to go up like 10% because, you know, you changed this one, this one, and this one, this one." So when that keeps getting jerked around year over year, I, I don't know. Maybe now you're going to be able to put it as like a stable, you know, thing, so that we can have prediction, but we're, we can, we get to say it, and then we have no control over that, we just say, "Well, that's going to make your rates go up this much." So, you know, making a big change all in one year is a big deal.
So that was two, where's the other four?
That's two. No, the four are good, I'm, I'm happy with those, right? Creating larger education districts, already doing it, we're looking at the red. Support for reorganizing, already have it from the last bill, great. Moratorium on spending, there, I talked about it, great. Require explicit ballot language, I said, "I'm okay with that, whatever, that's fine, I don't have any concerns with that." And then the other one, clarify roles and responsibilities, Judy has to answer that one, I think, because it's principals and superintendents. So that, otherwise, none of those apply.
Well, on the tax rate, let me speak to that one. We really don't set those. Well, that's a ministerial function every year. We simply set, the, the tax commissioner sets a rate that will pay for all the spending that's been voted locally. What this is doing is basically saying, "We're not going to set that rate anymore, we're, that's going to be a, we're going to set the yield and say, 'Here's what a dollar on the homestead property tax rate will raise.'" And then local spending, if it, if local spending goes 1.2% over that, then that'll be, so it'll, it basically takes Montpelier out of the equation.
Okay, so this is a good thing for us? No.
Well, it's, it's...
Or a bad thing.
It doesn't shift, it doesn't shift the cost, it's simply, it, I always have trouble explaining this. Dave Sharp is much better at this, and so you should listen in to the way he discusses it. But it basically takes, we just won't be setting that rate anymore, we'll be telling you what a, what the yield is on a dollar's worth of spending. So, it's, it's really, it's really kind of neutral, but, and it should make it a little bit simpler over time.
I think it makes it more transparent. I think all of it does that.
It makes it more transparent.
It makes it more transparent. I don't want more things that you can't explain. One comment, that the elephant in the room is a teacher contract. It's no different for the school boards than it is for the state of Vermont right now. The governor wants to open up the contract, and if the contract's not opened up, there has to be risks. And that same situation exists in a school. And I find it, I'm not on the, I'm not on a school board, so it's easy for me to say this, but I think at some time along, there needs to be a change, and the contract with teachers has to be addressed. It cannot be, well, Burlington agreed to this, South Burlington agreed to this, so therefore we have no choice but to agree to this. As long as that circle continues, you know, never stops. And ultimately, what's going to happen is there will be risks, that just not going to continue to spiral upwards.
Or, at some point in time, we should talk about a statewide teachers' contract. Now, there's all kinds of discussions about that, and of course, the immediate reaction to it is, is it's going to cost every money, everybody money, because everybody's going to want the South Burlington rates, right? And maybe that's how it'll have to be for the first, first time through, but then the situation will become that it, that it could even out. But that's so far beyond my sphere, aside from the fact that I used to work for an international labor union, and we won't even go into that, but it's so beyond my sphere that I can't even address, other than that, that's an issue that floats around periodically.
Well, and I should have mentioned right up front, one of the things our committee looked at was healthcare, and we were all very disappointed that things that were in the works didn't happen. So that, because that was something, obviously, that the teachers had indicated an interest in being a part of a universal healthcare system. There is something you'll see in here that a healthcare cost work group, because we understand that health cost, healthcare, not only in education, but it's, it's, it's driving everything, and I've seen just some amazing statistics about the overall budget, that if you take out the increases in healthcare, we've actually had a dollar decrease in the budgets over the last four years. So if we don't do something about this, it's going to eat us alive, as it, as it has been. One of the things I wanted to say about, I had a thought about the healthcare, anyway, I'll come back to it, I'll think of it.
I just...
I saw it right at first.
No, go ahead. Sharing and passion, and coming off of that conversation, I think that the notion that we will have to rip staff when our class sizes are at the margin of the maximum allowable class size doesn't really become an issue, an option for us in remaining within our own policy guidelines. So the idea that we have to do something around contracts, I think if you feel like you need to impose a cap, then I invite you to take salary and benefits on a statewide contract, because we are negotiating against the Vermont NEA. And those comparables are what will come back from those whom they hire to, they and we agree to hire, but, but in, in fairness, those folks are employed en masse by the NEA and in isolation by our small groups. And so we can seek the most fair-minded institution to find our comparables, and we will still be bootstrapping each other all around our region. And so if you feel the cap must come on, I think that there is no option but to consider a statewide contract under salary and benefits. I don't, I don't think that those can happen in isolation from one another, so I invite you to consider it, because there are also places around the state where that wouldn't be the case, and they could be required to rip. But when you're talking about, I would say the majority of Chittington County, we are operating in places where what we're offering kids is an environment that's about as efficient as we can get it in our buildings. So feel free to think about those two choices, either think about that impact of the cap, and maybe it's, it can't be imposed as simply as it might sound, because it's not just us doing something about contract negotiations, because we are, we're doing the very best we can. And so with 83 or 87% of our budget being around direct instruction to our students, and really being focused on outcomes for kids, and every budget item being tied to that conversation and that evidence, I'm not seeing how we can navigate a 2% increase in an environment where the, the comparables are at least 3%, and our insurance costs are going up more so than 2%. And we, you know, we are responsible for our contracts, but we are very hamstrung. And there's not a lot we can do about that.
I, I understand that. There is a tremendous imbalance in the contract negotiations. You know, we've got a national organization, we've got a local organization, we've got a state organization, there's basically negotiated contracts for 165 days a year. The school board does it once every three years. So it is a very lopsided, but my point is that if something isn't done in that area, the voters will probably force a rip. As Westford, its last two years, it's been confronted with this issue. You know, if in fact, this, a new budget didn't pass, or this, the reconsideration didn't pass, and a new budget's cut, and if that, for some reason that didn't pass, then in fact, the board would, they're going to have to make those really tough decisions, and I suspect it's going to be staff. I don't know how else you would possibly do it, turn off the heat.
Another, another major battle around that is going to be, I was going to mention the Cadillac tax, which I think you're aware of, the excise tax coming on plans, which is going to add huge potential cost. So the idea, one of the ideas of this study is possibly moving a lot of large groups to the Vermont Health Connect. So, I mean, that would be, certainly be something to remove that from negotiations, that would be a huge, that would be a huge piece.
I don't think they're going to really use it as a great idea. Why didn't we think of that last time we negotiated?
Well, I think they might say it's a great idea, as long as, as long, as long as we're totally compensated on a dollar for dollar.
No, please don't consider that in the language you're considering. Thank you.
But schools that have a contract that goes into, Cadillac tax goes into effect in 18?
18.
18. Those schools that have a contract that goes, spills over into 18 are going to be in for a rude surprise.
Marla?
Question for you, Judy. Did, did our legislatures get grant, I'm assuming Town of Essex, the financial guru out there must have worked with you on this grant?
Yes, I sent it to the rubber, he said it looked, he said it looked accurate to him.
Okay. So did, did they get copies?
Yes, they did.
Got copies, okay. The other, so I just wanted to make sure you had that in front of you, so you see the implications. And in talking about students, one of the questions I have, which Grant will probably disagree with me, but when I look at all kids, one of the things that I always get concerned about is, this last year in Essex Junction, we had to come up in our budget that had already been approved, English language learner population. And then this year's budget, we had to make sure we had the money in there. There's quite a lot of languages spoken, I think Amy has told us 25 or more, and just, things are changing, they're, and to me, they're changing rapidly, because I got off the board for three or four years, and I come back, and I'm shocked at the changes that have occurred. You know, do, whether it's unfounded, unfounded mandates or whatever, but seeing the, I don't know how you can do it, but I would like to see the funding follow children. I don't think one district should get hit with 40 new students or 25 new students in a year and not have some help or guidance, or if you have a special ed student, is it really fair to the kids? I mean, I'm looking at individual kids, and if I had that child, or if they were in my family, I would want to make sure that they could get equal treatment here in Junction as they would in another smaller town or place. I just, I don't know. I don't know how we'd do it, but I think it would be the fair thing to start considering down in the future.
Well, the ideal way to do it, Marla, is to have the state of Vermont as one school district, because, and then everybody gets treated exactly the same way. I mean, we are, the number of our students in the state of Vermont doesn't compare with states, other states, and they're, you know, who have much bigger school districts, in a city as opposed to a state. So the ideal situation for what you, you are requesting is one school district, then all the programs are able to be funneled out to all the students however they need them. Nobody wants to hear that kind of a discussion, but that, you know, having, having come from a big city, and knowing the size of the school districts, that's the way to go. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that those kids are also getting the best education, that they get in the smaller districts, but, but the ability to serve every student's needs is one, that's one way. And that's just, you know, I'm not proposing that, I don't have amendment to the bill, that's just, that's just a thought that I was, you know, that I've been thinking about.
I know, I've heard that argument before, but I don't know, when you've got principals and you've got the, the schools that we have, and the distances between them, like when I go down to Alexandria, Virginia, and I visit my stepdaughter and my son, they have in Fairfax County, I mean, tremendous school, absolutely beautiful, it's huge, but it's all under one roof, and their schools are closer than we can get them in Vermont. So the comparisons here are difficult, you know?
Every complexity can be solved with money, but the problem is, is that, you know, what's the movie, "Show Me the Money," you know, that kind of thing, because who are we, who, who can we ask for, for money? We can't ask our local taxpayers through their property tax for the money that's needed, but by the same token, we turn around and then we can't ask the entire population of the state of Vermont, because that's what it results in. One way or the other, local people are paying... One way or the other, local people are paying for it. You know, I, I get a little frustrated when I hear, well, the federal government is paying for it. Well, we're paying the federal government to pay for it too. And so, it really, it, it, it all boils down to the individual taxpayer having to pay whatever amount has to be paid to sustain their schools and their communities and that kind of thing. And I, you know, this is my fourteenth year in Montpelier and I still don't have a solution to, to a lot of these, to a lot of these problems.
And there was discussion of should we change the funding formula to get away from per pupil expenditure, but not, it wasn't seriously talked about because that is one easily way to compare. Now, it certainly favors the larger districts like ours that get more economies of scale than it does some of the smaller schools and districts, no question.
Al, just a couple of comments and I have a specific question. One of the things a lot of these members have heard me say for years is that nothing is going to be done on this until education gets very expensive. Remember, Jack? And I think we're there. The other thing that kind of got my attention here recently is the fact of a statement made by the governor two days ago, that this is a four-year problem in his view right now. I think we got to look beyond this, this year. I, I think this is a fate of complete and we're going to have to live with it. So, hang on to your hats because I think this is going to be a rough ride.
You think this bill is a fate of nothing?
Yeah, pretty much, pretty much. I'll bet the vast majority.
I wish you were right, but it's.
Well, we'll see, but it's going to be a long-term problem. The fact of the matter is the state's been spending more than it's taken in revenue and if you've got a five percent spending and two percent in and that two percent goes away or it goes down significantly, you're in big trouble. And that's where I think we're at and we're going to be in there for a while. But let me go on. One of the specific things about the red is the merger of our tax rates. And, you know, when I came to these boards, I came because of the kids and do what I could to strengthen education. If we have a single tax rate, and I've looked at Essex Junction schools, I've been in Essex Junction schools and I look at Essex Town schools as well, there are schools in Essex Junction that really ought to be replaced. I'm going to say that. I, I don't have any personal interest in it, but other than the fact that there is a need to upgrade those schools, there are infrastructure needs in Westford. There are not so many needs in Essex Town because over the years we've upgraded those schools and the board's done an excellent job of keeping them in good shape. But when I think about the cap and where we're headed and how we collect money today with our capital plan and so forth, it's like, whoa. New schools are very, very expensive. Infrastructure is very expensive. Will the cap, not only will it hurt us on a cap on a, maybe on a Cadillac tax or on a cap going way out of whack, will a major expense, because I know we, I, at least it's my understanding that there is no capital construction funds from the state any longer.
For schools?
For schools.
Right.
And therefore, if we know that there is an infrastructure need in the proposed red district, we either have to go out and make the state commitment to get those resources to help us with those construction needs and to help manage our costs so that it's affordable within our communities. Otherwise, we're faced with a major bill for every taxpayer in the, in our communities for the next twenty-plus years. So, so my question is, does the cap cover or exclude, really its exclusion of capital construction and, and are there any other exclusions? Because it makes a big difference. It could make a big difference in whether or not we're penalized.
Now, it does exclude some emergency situations, but you, you raise a really good point because, and I'm going to turn to the expert on this issue because the state of Vermont is finally, if I'm correct, after all these years of moratorium on capital cost caught up to what was owed in the past, but now we have to have this other huge debate about what are we going to do going forward with all the capital construction needs?
Right. We put the moratorium, I think it was in two thousand and seven, on capital construction for school districts mainly because of the volume of the number of, amount of money that was owed to school districts. And the, the language of the moratorium, which by the way has been renewed every, every year for the, in the capital bill, is that there will be no capital construction for school funding until the, the backlog has been paid off and until a way to fund school capital construction is found. So, there's, there's two parts to this. So, this year, we will pay off the last three million dollars to, by the way, a consolidated school district that, 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 because we had, that they got in there before, you know, we, consolidation was allowed under. And there's language in your bill, well, it's got to do with, but it's got to do with if you sell a school, you don't, you no longer, if you're a consolidate or a red district, you no longer have to, you know, there's a rule that says you have to pay the school, the state back. If, if you sell a school district, you have to pay back the state a percentage of what you realize on the sale of that school equal to what the state originally gave you. So, if the state gave you thirty percent, we use this in our committee. So, if you get a dollar on a, on a building, you, you owe the state thirty cents. I mean, it's, it's basically as simple as that. Anyway, the capital bill that will be, will be on the floor this week has language that we are forming a committee, God love committees, but we are forming a committee that will take a look at how we want to fund capital expenditures for school districts. I will tell you that I had formed a committee last year and there were three members from the institutions committee and one from Ways and Means and one from Education and one from Appropriations. And we met, yes, and we met periodically through the, through the session and never came up with a solution. So, we're going to try again with a little more detail in this one and see if we can do something, but it's going to be a problem and I understand that. Conversely, let me tell you that at the present time, there is no one in the State Board of Education and the offices of the State Board of Education that can do what needs to be done if we institute capital spending for school districts because they don't have the staff to do it. I mean, you don't, you ask for, you're going to, you're going to put a project up that costs ten million dollars. Okay. That's what it's going to cost, but then the Department of Education looks at that ten million dollars and what's you're going to spend and says, well, this doesn't qualify. For instance, if you, if the state says hundred square foot for students, per student, and you're going a hundred and ten, the state will pay for that ten, hundred, but they won't pay for that extra ten. So, that's on your dime, as it were, the school district's dime. So, right now, we have talked to the Department of Education. They don't have anybody who can even handle it right now, even if we should say it can happen. So, this study, we're going to look at it, but it's going to face, it's going to be other school districts who are, and it, you know, the consolidation and the red districts, it's an issue that's going to happen because a lot of the schools were built the sixties and seventies and they are starting to fall down and, and, you know, we still have emergency money. I'll be quite frank with you, the governor put three million dollars in the capital bill for school construction and we took it out. So, the committee took it out. It, three million dollars sitting in the capital bill for, it would be four or five years before school would even be ready theoretically to do it and you can't leave capital money sitting there waiting for it all that time. So, we'll look at it another time. We've left like three hundred thousand dollars if a school immediately consolidates and has some renovations that they want, there will be money there for that. But Al, right now, again, we don't have the money to do it. We don't have, they don't, the Education Department doesn't have the staff to handle it. The person who was the expert left the Department of Education and so, and they've never brought anybody else up to, to, to work on it. So, that's a whole different story as, in regards to this. So, that's all I can tell you about capital construction for school districts.
I appreciate your answer and honesty with this because it just, it just looks like we could really try to do the right things for kids and get, our taxpayers get slammed. And, and here we are, like, you know, I am familiar with the Summit School. I think it's forty-five years old. There, there are major changes that could be made.
I'm going to interrupt Al. I reset something we said earlier. Essex Junction, we have the capital plans, we have invested in our schools. The last school is Summit Street. If our budget passes, there'll be five to six hundred thousand dollars going into that school. I defy you to go back into the schools. Your statement was very.
Okay. Well, it's another school.
Judith, were you asking me or asking us or?
I was appreciative of your comment about no one at the Department or Agency of Education. And when you asked earlier about what you could do, and I know in the bill, in the beginning, and Tim has heard, heard me say this before, if you could strengthen the Agency of Education, it could help us with the redundancies that are happening in each of the local school systems because we're absent state system guidance and systems especially. There's a dire need for a financial system in our state and a student data management system. And those were both in the original bill and Tim, I'm hoping, because you've heard me say it too many times already, that one of the ways locals could save costs is if we had a stronger agency with the, with the support that they need. They have just been stripped of their ability to support school systems.
If there's a recession, I think they've taken as many personnel hits as any agency other than Human Services and State Government.
And when Human Services gets cut, those needs in turn fall to the schools again to provide supports for our students. So, as you continue to hear about education costs escalating, know that part of that is from the cost cutting that's happening to other agencies, especially Human Services.
And quite frankly, right now, it's not going to get better.
Mark?
So, I'm glad you, you segued with that. You know, we're always looking for places to cut that aren't going to affect student opportunity, but your earlier statement of how we are about the size of a larger district elsewhere, there is an easy way to get some economies of scale around HR systems, around student management systems, payroll systems. Why do we have hundreds of payroll systems to serve the number of employees? A real example our school has, we have a little under three hundred students K through twelve, little under two hundred K through eight. We cannot get software licensing that works for our school because the assumption is you have thousands of students. So, we're looking to buy thirty licenses for a language program and they're like, our minimum's three hundred. That's something we cannot do for our schools. If we were negotiating as a state, we could. This is, I'm guessing this is something that sixty to seventy percent of our schools are facing? There is so much repetition, so much need for IT, so much need for management, so much need for understanding, training, all of it is absolutely wasted money. And that's something we can do without a single structural change to any of our districts or affecting a single program for any of our students. And I have not heard it come up. I have not seen a push for it and I am, I'm shocked that we get this far without recognizing that some of those inefficiencies are our biggest weaknesses.
Child nutrition included. We were using our buying power cross-state.
These are the elements that fall sometimes into mandates that kind of go back to minds that we can get ourselves into a point where we actually don't make the investments to ever change the curve of our expenditure growth. You know, it's, it's like buying new curtains when you need to replace the windows. You know, if, where do you want to, where do you want to get and bend that curve? You know, do we have a spending problem? That is, I find to be one of the most infuriating statements that's been out recently because I don't hear it throughout universally. As a state, we must have a spending problem. You talked about our spending problem as a state, correction growth and other costs that we have in, in there. But this is a cost which actually, if we don't have the cost of our education taken care of, who are going to be the people that are contributing to Social Security and Medicare and to our town budgets? So, when we're not, we have fire and rescue and we have other protections that we're not driving over rutted roads. You know, it doesn't, there is another part of government that produces our citizenry. Education is what that is, so.
I was respectfully saying that. I don't necessarily think that we have a spending problem. I think we have a revenue problem. I think if, you know, we've got, got four legislators in the room, so.
Aaron, you know, we hear this argument every day. To me, it's a matter of semantics. I mean, it's, one drives the other. You've heard of the alligator jaw, it's getting a lot of play this year, that, you know, we've got revenues in the state growing at three percent, but we've got spending growing at five percent.
I mean, I think it would just be so great. I think about all this hard work and everything that we do invest in the state in education and I'd love, I mean, we can, I feel like we could really leverage it more to maybe help, say, attract businesses that make sense for the state and, you know, I would just ask all of you, I guess, in your different committees to think about if there's ways that we can incentivize and, and do that to help, help the problem. You're right. I mean, they work together. You can't, you know, but I think maybe there's ways that we could try to work on that in the state too and maybe help alleviate some of the crises that we, the crisis we have going on with just not having enough money to do the things that we want to do.
My thesis has been all along that the solution to Vermont's problem is economic growth. If you don't, if you can't grow revenues any faster, I think they're talking about two point six percent this year, we're in trouble. We're in trouble. And we need to, but it's going to take time to do that. And education is one part of that, but there's a lot of other pieces that need to go into play. If we don't have the money that New York has or some of these other states, we're just going to be careful about the laws we do pass and we need, we need to, we need economic growth or we are going to have these kinds of problems for a long time into the future.
It's hard to ignore your neighbors leaving the area, going to Florida, Arizona, and you see it, I see it in our own neighborhood and it's like, I wonder if anyone is monitoring this because that growth, if that growth doesn't occur, I think you're exactly right.
Yeah, I, I don't know if anybody's monitoring it. I wish they would.
I have another one of my theses. While people have been going to Florida for, retiring for years, my parents did.
Yeah.
It's my thesis that there's going to be an increase in the percentage of the more well-to-do people are going to seek those areas where the cost of living is cheaper. And that, not just taxes, it's heat and all the other things that go along with it. And to the extent that we have this aging population and we have a higher percentage of those people who are relatively well-to-do leaving, it's going to put more burdens on the state, which I think is going to compound our problems even more. Dr. Dooley?
You know, I'm starting to feel like we're attacking you from listening to this, but...
I don't, we don't feel it. We hear this stuff every day.
Yeah, okay. I just, I want you to know, I, I really...
Hey, Marla, that's why they pay us the big bucks, you know?
Well, I appreciate.
That's six hundred and seventy-nine dollars a week for sixteen, eighteen weeks.
But no, I, I really appreciate that you came tonight and I just worry that you won't come to another evening with us, so.
No, but I will tell you something that I am very interested in. I, of the four of us here, I stay in Montpelier during the week, so I don't come home. Of the four of us here, I stay in La Pila during the week, so I don't come home. There's this empty house and there's no reason for me to come back here. And I usually go down on Monday afternoons and so, but, but I'm very interested in the discussions on the red because I was not a member of the committee on the previous consolidation study, but I was very involved in coming and, and, and paying, you know, and listening to what was going on. And I had thoughts about that one. I thought that should have happened all those years ago, but that's, that's my own opinion. But I certainly hope that the discussions on the red for, for the three school districts bring forth something that works for everybody. And I understand that Westford's got the problem, but I just really hope that, to me, I look at it, there's, I look at, there should be no reason why we are not one school district. Before I heard, you know, years ago, I heard, well, we have a different philosophy of education in Essex Town and Essex Junction has a different philosophy of education. And I used to coach at the high school and my God, the kids all come from everywhere to the high school and they got along fine and we, and, and that kind of thing. And so I keep thinking, well, the philosophies can't be that different because the kids still manage to thrive and, and, and go on and, and do well. So that was, and so that's what I'm hoping for. Now I'm making a push on you people, so.
I think, Linda, from the last study to this study, the numbers are a lot different like Grant has done and the financial CEO at the Town of Essex. If you look at the numbers of what Westford's tax rates are, Town of Essex, Essex Junction, I think for a change, we're in the same...
Well, it'll be interesting, you know, it'll be interesting and I hope that I can get here sometimes to when, when, when the meetings occur just to hear what's happening.
Tomorrow night, six thirty.
Tomorrow night, no.
Right here.
We should, we should send them the link to, we have a pretty extensive website for the study.
I've seen it. I read it in the last week. It's great.
It's got the minutes. She can watch videos of the meetings. It's, it's just, so I think if we could have Ben send each of them, that would be great.
So I hope you heard that we appreciate your work and, and the complexity of it and that if you, if you looked at higher systems or statewide systems, knowing that two percent caps will make school systems do the inevitable, which would be cut teachers and take away programs from kids and even further create more inequities across our state. So I hope you can reconsider that.
I just want to add one thing. I want to do a shout out to Grant because he was in our meeting several times. He's been to Ways and Means. And on the expansion piece, I, I think the testimony of the, of the business officers was so critical to getting us to where we are today and just, the whole committee was very, very impressed by his and Rick Pembroke's testimony.
I just want to thank you guys so much for coming to the house.
Thank you for inviting us. It was a pleasure to be here.
Taking all of our questions. It was great. Thank you.
Good luck this week. And be upon them.
So we'll just take a moment just to get reorganized here. All right, everyone, we're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is a discussion on the multi-tiered system. And Erin McGuire is going to talk to us.
Good to see all of you. We wanted to go ahead and provide you all an update. The multi-tiered system of supports has been a framework under the AWP, the Annual Work Plan for you all, and it felt important to go ahead and give you an update about where we are with our assessment, talk a little bit about the results and then a little bit about what's next. So just briefly in review, as a reminder, you've all heard this because you heard the presentation when Judy and Amy and I presented earlier. But the MTSS is made up of really five components. The first is a comprehensive systemic approach for our whole system. The second is effective collaboration. The third is high quality instruction and intervention. And then the fourth is a comprehensive and balanced assessment system along with a well-designed professional expertise of the folks who work within each of those areas. MTSS, those five areas are broken up into multiple characteristics that detail what it means to fully implement each component. And so that is just a brief overview of what it is. You've seen it more in depth and I also wanted to let you know that on your board site, there's now an MTSS section of your board site where you can go and look at field guides, you can see resources, you can see videos of MTSS if you're interested in going deeper. As we shared when we met with you before, all seven schools are now complete with their assessments on all the characteristics of each component in MTSS. ELT, the Educational Leadership Team, has completed a review of all of that data. And actually just today, the MTSS task team met and that's a task team, a subset of ELT. And we developed a framework for action planning based on MTSS. So we'll be moving forward with that. And also while we're working at the SU level, each school has, also has a leadership team that's met and discussed priorities under the MTSS framework for the upcoming year. So that's where we are with the assessment. I wanted to provide you with an overview of the results from the assessment at an SU level. So, and, and just to give you a framework, each of the components has characteristics that were rated by each school. And I, we turned those into a percentage, keeping in mind that this wouldn't be like passing is, you know, sixty or seventy and an A is a ninety, but looking at it from zero to one hundred as far as where we are in implementation. A zero percent would, we, we are not implementing this at all right now. And a hundred percent would mean we are in full implementation as described by the MTSS framework. So this is where we find ourself in, ourselves in each area. And I also included the, the value on that percentage because it's a one to four scale. So I just wanted you to also see on the scale as people rate themselves where our average came out. It's important for you to know that schools vary in their areas of strength and weakness within these areas, within these components. And so there's, there's some relativity here to be aware of from the numbers. You know, some schools might have been at seventy percent in one area while another school might have been at thirty-five percent in one area and they balance each other out. I think we did find at the SU level that we were coming out around the halfway point, but it doesn't mean that everybody's at that place. The different schools are, are all in different places. You can also see that data on your website, on the board website, if you're interested in really digging into each school and the data sets associated with each school. And I will stop and take some questions about results once I just get through these next two slides. It seemed also important for you to have a list of relative strengths and relative areas of challenge for the MTSS assessment CCSU-wide. And a relative strength indicates somewhere where there was seventeen or more points for all seven schools combined. And then areas where there were fourteen points or lower, I considered an area of relative challenge. That said, just keep in mind, those numbers aren't very far apart, right? So I just wanted, wanted to make sure you had that frame. When you look at our relative strengths, we definitely have a, a good strength around a culture of high expectations, continuous improvement, distributed leadership, vision and goal-setting, collaborative engagement and promoting strong family partnerships. We also have a strength around high quality instruction that's based on the common core. We're recognizing ourselves as good at identification of students who need closer monitoring and intervention. That'll be important as we get to the challenge, we're going to make a connection back to that one. We do have a long-term professional development plan that we're working towards to support MTSS. And also educators participate in professional development that supports effective collaboration. We recognize a strength in the tier three, meaning the higher level of service that we provide in this system and also that the special education process is clear. So those are some consistent strengths in our supervisory union associated with the assessment. When you go to the next slide around relative weaknesses, what you'll see here generally is a need to focus in on the, the balanced assessment system, which you all have, we've talked with you about before as well. So some of the relative areas of challenge, that the balanced assessment system is, that the present, there's a presence of a system and that there's knowledge and skill around that. Also that there is a comprehensive system for supporting professional learning rather than school by school. Oh, sorry, thank you, Amy. Sorry, I didn't move the slide. So a comprehensive system for supporting professional learning is something that was recognized within that area. Also that there, at the time of the assessment, there was not yet formalized decision to make, we hadn't decided yet how to assess MTSS, how to evaluate it. And so since then, we've made that decision. So I just wanted to make sure folks were aware that we will be using the MTSS self-assessment as a progress monitoring tool year after year. It can be used that way. But when we did this first assessment, we hadn't made that decision yet. So that came up as an area of challenge. Uses of data as part of our culture is something that we want to grow. And then another area that was noted as a lower score was the system of intervention existing across all tiers. So you'll note in our strength, we're pretty good at recognizing when intervention is necessary. The idea that we have a really comprehensive intervention system with research-based interventions across classrooms, tier one, tier two and tier three is something that we need to work towards. It was really recognized throughout the assessment process that tier one and tier two need to be a focus for our supervisory union. We've got the really higher levels of intervention down. It's, it's the lower tiers that we need to focus in on. We noted that we need to work on a wide range of assessments being available to assess essential skills and understandings and having assessment tools that are in place that provide relevant or reliable data. Professional staff being well-prepared to engage in ongoing assessment is something that we need to focus on. And also the use of assessment data to examine systems. So that was an area that came up. And then also the PD to support the refinement and implementation of the assessment system. So those are the overarching results of the assessment for the SU. Again, keeping in mind that each individual school has their individual areas of strength and individual areas of weakness that we should be paying attention to at, at that level. But when we look at our system as a whole, these are the themes that arose and the scores that we came to for, for the system. Before I move on to what's next, does anyone have any questions for me about the results or, and Judy and I have both been co-leading this effort. We co-lead the MTSS task team at ELT and regularly co-lead efforts with ELT on the topic. So any questions or Judy, do you have anything you'd like to add about the results?
Well, I would just add that I'm really pleased the way our SU approached it in that this isn't an RTI model, but rather a whole system framework. And when I hear other systems around us, they're focused more like just the special ed directors are leading that. We've made this really an overarching framework that we're going to use for action planning and moving forward. And what was great about doing the evaluation is each school did it. So when they came forward, now that we have these results, this isn't a question about administration saying we need to develop, further develop our local assessment systems. Instead, they're saying, hey, we need to develop our local assessment systems. They discovered it through, through this evaluation process and the need for tools as well as the need for resources, which I don't even want to talk about tonight.
Yeah, forget it.
No new, but you know, those, those were all generated at the school level and shared at the leadership level. So moving forward, we have that synergy of the collaboration that we need to design those systems. So I'm definitely excited about the work moving forward.
Any other questions about the results? Yes.
So, understanding that, you know, this is a work in progress and where are we at? So just kind of the, the broad question, is our progress where you expected it to be at this time? Are we on track to complete within the timeline that was presented? Just some, something that makes it a little easier to understand this from the outside.
Sure. So from my perspective, and Amy and Judy can jump in as well, I feel like we're right on track, keeping in mind that this is our baseline data. So as you know, whenever you're looking at progress, you need something to, you know, put the stake in the ground of where we are and then you need to track your growth over time. And so this is our baseline data around this framework. Our goal was to have the data by January first and we met that deadline. Our goal was to look at the data as an entire leadership team in February and we met that deadline. And our next goal was to develop a framework for the school action planning process that was aligned with MTSS. And we did that today as a task team that will be brought forward in April to ELT for approval. It makes me want to go to what's next because this is sort of a simple framework of where we are today and then where we're going. So the next step is to develop the action plans around MTSS and implement those for the fifteen, sixteen school year. And then use the MTSS self-assessment again to measure our progress. And you saw one of the areas of challenge was to have an evaluation system for MTSS and I put a little parenthesis next to it. We, we've done that now. We have a system to assess ourselves over the next five years. This is not a one-year experience. This is really a three to five-year experience that we'll be going through. And, and now if you asked the ELT and the schools to identify whether we have an assessment for MTSS, do we have a way to measure our progress? I would expect instead of it being rated as a challenge, now that we have it in place around how we're going to do that over the next five years, you would see that show up as an area of strength. And so I do think that we will see over time growth, but we are not measuring that yet because this was our baseline year. But as far as the annual work plan, we are right on track where we expected to be based on the use of the framework. And we will look to report on percentages of implementation. I mean, this is, this is sort of your beginning, your beginning framework for report out, right? So here's your first report out on the data around this framework. And unless you need something else or you feel like it doesn't give you the depth that you want or something, we might try to bring it back in this framework. So you could put this one next to, and we'll do that for you, next to the net, the next set of data and you can watch it grow over time in hopefully a very transparent way.
And you'll see these components within your school, your new... School action plan template coming forward.
Okay. Tim?
So, this is, same thing I'm going to be saying basically with every presentation now. So your three to five years is really critical because the whole system's going to change, probably. So basically, you know, how can you guys work into, you know, how can you guys work into, oh, you know, some of those lower percentages, the things that are like five years, you know, actually, okay, that's cut. We're not even going to, we're not even going to prioritize that because we're going to be a red and then we're going to have to redo the whole thing, right? So, so now I'm saying that kind of really broadly, obviously so many things need to keep happening and need to keep going. And then we'll keep going after that. But it's important to reckon, you know, I think you guys should really start working that in. It's never too early to like work that into part... It's never too early to like work that into part of it.
I'm so excited you asked that question. So Essex Town is also working in the MTSS framework. They aren't using it exactly the same way that we are, but my counterpart and I have talked quite a bit about it.
Great.
So that's, that's one piece that I would offer. The second piece I would offer is that the state is using this for purposes of continuous improvement planning for the entire state. So this is not sort of like a framework we researched out of Utah and said, oh, this looks great. This is something that is statewide too. So I do feel like it actually is well-framed for us to be able to move into a collaborative dialogue if a red takes place, planning-wise. Yeah, it actually supports it.
Great.
And Tim, this is the way I think about it. When you look at those five things, those should happen. They should happen in a small house. They should happen in a big house. They should happen if you move from house to house. These are five things that should happen. Whether they're, they're the exact same assessments or the exact same approach may not be, you know, the case when we talk about the potential of a unified district. But these are things that, as Erin mentioned, Essex Town, it's the language that we've adopted statewide.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's really general, those five things are so general that, okay, that's mother of the.
Although, well, the depth of the rubric.
No, no, underneath it is all the details. Yeah, of course.
But yes, agreed.
And Judy talked earlier about, you know, that's not being a response to intervention. This is not a special education. I view this as a school improvement framework. This is how we talk about everything that we do.
So then I guess the only thing would be just, and this is just like commentary, future thing, like on the results page, there's like, it is kind of confusing because you're talking about assessments and I think you mean testing students and all the other things about students and then assessment of the MTSS are mixed, they're mixing together. And it's listed about seven times and it gets really confusing which one is about which. So maybe just come up with different words for those two things so that it's really clear, right? I know like this whole thing of assessments, it's kind of soft, the soft word for testing, you know, but like really we should put in the words that what it is.
Student assessment versus MTSS.
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah, sure. Yep. Great, thanks. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And we'll move right into Amy discussing Sback.
And I did. I did press print on this very short PowerPoint and then realized the font was so tiny, it would insult you if I handed it to you. So I will send this to Ben to give to you, but it's not very long. Quite frankly, this was my way of just keeping a script together. Judy asked me to come in and give a brief update on our new state assessment. And also I'll end with some highlights that you'll hear more about in the next few months. Erin and Judy already gave a bit of a hint about changes in school action planning, and I'll show you where those came from. So new state assessment, you may have heard of it, Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. And this is just a reminder for those of you who don't necessarily have kids in the school or haven't necessarily memorized this, but, but the shift from New England Common Assessment Program to Smarter Balance Assessment or Sback has been tremendous in that it functions quite differently. There's so many parts of it that are quite different. It, it's caused a large body of work within our schools, but I also want to say it's been a good body of work. And the observations that I've had, I'll begin with this, is that the students are actually enjoying it. I walked in and observed a few classes that were doing the practice test the other day, and I caught a little girl laughing at one of the reading things that they were having. So that's the goodness. I'm going to start with the goodness. But just so that you know, Sback does have four parts. It's a math test, a math performance task, an English Language Arts test, and an English Language Arts performance task. The performance task, and this is a piece that does feel very different to teachers and students, begins with a 30-minute teacher-led activity. The one at the high school that I was practicing with, the high school and the CTE teachers, the math problem had to do with a zip line. So we had cut out pieces of string and the teachers were holding the strings and demonstrating what a zip line is. Turn and talk to yourself. Here's some questions I'm going to ask you. Turn and talk to yourself. And write on the, on the board. Very different for our teachers to be in a standardized testing environment and run a 30-minute activity in which students get to talk to each other. It's been highly engaging. The students have done the practice test. I'll share with you the window. One of our schools is actually implementing the real test tomorrow. So I've only witnessed the practice test. The test has all these four parts. We have three months to give this test. So a third grade teacher could give this math test over three different days. They could spread it out over three different weeks if they'd like. The performance, the English Language Arts test, or I'm sorry, the English Language Arts performance task, they may do the 30-minute activity one day, the next day do the research part of it, wait a few days, and then maybe do the writing part of it. It may be that there's some students, for whatever reason, it wasn't working out that day. They can move it to another day. We have students that maybe need to have more smaller environments. It gives us much more flexibility to give this test in a way that we've never experienced. Simply thinking about Kneecap being two weeks long and Sback being 30 minutes long, or 30.
Thank you.
90 days long, there's a great deal of flexibility there. With that flexibility comes a large machine. I'm very proud of how our district has managed this machine. To, to provide the level of service that you're going to hear about and the level of individuality on this testing required a great deal of work behind the scenes to get it going. And again, I'm going to say I'm so proud of the people and the systems that we've had in place to be able to pull this off. There are some districts that are struggling a little bit because it was the absence of systems. It is a computer adaptive test, which means it provides students with questions that are individualized and responsive. I answer a question a certain way, it moves me to another question in that way. When I'm sitting next to someone else, the test looks very different anyway. Even if we were moving at the same pace or answering the same way, they're randomized questions. There are a series of universal tools available to all students, highlighting notepads, those kinds of things. And there are additional designated supports and accommodations available to eligible students. Our English language learners can click a button and hit text to speech. That's considered a designated support. We have students who have IEPs, who have specific accommodations that are unique to their IEP. And the vast majority of it is computer, computer organized. Who's participating? Well, no child left behind is what dictates who participates in any state assessment. So that hasn't changed from Kneecap, grades three through eight and grade 11. This is our current testing window. I apologize, there's little red boxes there. The Vermont Sback Administration Window, like all Sback states, the last three months of school. So for this year, that was March 17th until June 12th. CCSU schools chose, they organized, we went with, we, we met with each Sback planning team, each school set up an Sback planning team to determine the best way to administer this assessment. Again, unique to having this flexibility. So you can see the dates that are in here. Some of them are team-based, based on things that were going on with the team. Sometimes it was based on they wanted to make sure their ed tech integration specialists would be available so that they could help them in the classroom when they were doing it. And as you know, in some buildings, we share those people. CTE and the high school worked hard regionally to try to find a time that would meet the needs of all high school students regionally. I know we weren't able to sort of get that. We were planning on those first two weeks in April, and for some schools, their systems weren't in place and they pushed it back a bit further. Essex High School and CTE was able to keep to the dates that regionally the high school principals agreed to, and they're doing it over four half-days together. They wanted to make sure they provided that opportunity for all of their students to do it together. And then Westford pushed theirs out just a little bit further so that we can get our systems in place for it. So these are our dates. This is approximate time it takes to take, to administer the test. Students will take far, much like Kneecap. If this were a Kneecap chart, you would see nine hours set aside. We didn't spend nine hours on Kneecap, but we, we try to organize as much or set aside as much time as we'd possibly need. But you can see how it's organized. English Language Arts test, hour and a half, grades three through five. Math test is comparable, and you can see that it's a little bit longer because there's a classroom activity for the performance tasks. How have we prepared? Well, as I said, our district made me quite proud. We developed a district Google site. We, anytime a new user manual came out, any new training manuals that came out, we put it on the Google site. We had Sback planning teams in each school that use those. Each school designated a school coordinator to work with our, and I'm so grateful, we have an educational assessment manager, Kim Fisk-Gawar, who is in every building, working with every school coordinator on the database that runs this assessment and setting up the other testing mechanisms for their school. I should also add the strength of our IT department to be able to make sure that all of our machines were up and ready and able to use and right screen size and right number of headphones and the right number of mice. All teachers who are administering Sback participate in trainings that we provided, as well as the Vermont Agency of Education came out with an online module that they took and then needed to pass a certification in order to be what's called a TA or a TE to administer this. We, and Erin took the lead on this, worked with learning specialists and special educators in and out of the district to design testing environments and set up the unique test for the individuals who would have those accommodations or designated supports and ensure that those are in place and that our learning specialists and special educators know how to use them. Parents were notified via a common parent letter that we wrote, translated in several languages, Marla. And I believe you got a copy of that in your board works, I think. And students were provided with an opportunity to take Sback training test or the longer Sback practice test. Neither of those produce assessment results. The first, the training test is a 15-minute test that walks them through how to take the test, how do you click this button and so forth. And the practice test mimics the length of the full Sback. So it gives teachers an opportunity to see just how long would it take my students to go through this test. I was able to observe a third grade classroom over at Summit on Friday who was participating in the, in the practice test. And as I said, the students, boy, they were ready to just keep moving on. And that's been the universal feedback that I've received from teachers who have put the practice test in front of their students is that the adults get a little bit nervous about this and the students were just cruising through in terms of the technology piece. That's just a quick overview of the immense amount of work that's been going on in our schools right now. I have to say, people have been by and large in good cheer. I think there was a great deal of nervousness. This is an unknown. It felt big. But again, as we watched our teachers kind of relax through it, I think the adults kind of relaxed through it. Do you have questions or?
One question.
Sure.
On the adaptive piece of this, will the district be receiving feedback regarding students, where they are at, not, not just pass or fail, but this really gives you a view of, of the learning that they missed, how and you'll be using that data and how?
I haven't seen the final copy of the score reports. We've seen glimpses of them. If you, you know, an interesting part of this is, is having a state assessment that's moved to a much larger consortium. So we see modules where you can see it, you can peek at the, the score sheet in the back, but we haven't seen the actual score sheet yet. Each of our states vote on these things. I know that we'll receive scaled scores, a math scaled score, and we'll receive it based on the, the individual subcomponents of the math test and so forth for English Language Arts, designed for a state to be able to create a growth accountability model. And you've probably heard, I'm sure that you've shared, that our secretary, Vermont abstained from the vote on the cut scores, which would have taken that scaled score and put it into four categories. She really is sending out a strong message that she's opposed to a performance-based approach to this. You sent this letter out. I was looking surprised. It's a fascinating letter. She's made quite a bit of noise nationally about it, that she prefers the numeric tracking as opposed to.
It is worth saying that it's boundary by two years on either side. So you cannot go two years below or two years above your grade level in the assessment.
But over time, what we're told, we will watch a student's score rise. So if a student, say for example, is reading two grades below, then their score will obviously be lower. But the idea would be to focus on the rise in, in.
I was wondering if there was a closed loop on the data versus how we might change curriculum to adjust to the student needs.
Well, keeping in mind that the reason we have this is because it's a new set of standards. It's a set of standards we've had for two years that we've been working with teachers on where we've revised our local assessment plan to meet these standards, where we've adopted a new writing program based on the standards, and now we've just adopted a new math program. So it will take a while for those instructional pieces, I think, to catch up. We don't know what those scores will look like. And I'm sure you've also heard that the State Board of Education has passed a resolution to not use that toward school accountability in the first year. We'll receive the scores at some point this summer, and at that point, we'll, we'll have a better sense. And I'm sure we'll question, was the technology a barrier? Was, was it the math skills? Was it a split-screen reading? How are our kids on closed texts? I think there's a lot of variables for these. Martha?
So I appreciate the link to the white paper on how to use the scores and how not to use them. And in the transition as well as long-term, I thought it was really helpful. That said, I'd be curious what her, there's a place that we as board members could go and look at the practice test. I know who the Secretary of Education is going to have the education committees in the House and Senate take a practice test. I really think we should understand to some degree what our students are being asked to do. I'm sure it's going to be humbling.
So when Ben emails me, this is a login. And I'll just show you real quickly that it will look like you need to log in, but you don't. And this is, oh, my access has been denied. That's not a good sign. When this is working, when you click on this link, it will say login, login, and you just click, 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 click as if you were going to log in, but you just keep going. And it will give you the choice to take the training test, which is 15 minutes. The training test is in grade bands, so it will say three, five. This is appropriate for a three, five audience, and it's a 15-minute walkthrough. The practice test is by grade level, and you can take it. And you can just sort of gobbledygobble click, gobbledyg, it won't record your answers. It won't give you an assessment result in the end, but it does give you a chance to sort of see how a student would take a graph to some of the technology-enhanced items and move a dot. You can kind of see some of those, get a better sense of the kind of tasks that are asked, but it won't produce a result. Last year, we had all of our teachers take the practice test. So as adults, they took it for the first time, and they generated a list of concerns about technology and the pause and the timeout and so forth. And a number of our teachers said, boy, this, this requires perseverance to sit for two hours and take this assessment. And we took that feedback into consideration when we designed the field experience at the high school last year. And I'm not sure if you followed that, but our high school was selected to do the field test last year, and we are so very grateful that we did because we learned a lot by watching our students do that. Things like knowing that you needed extra headsets, those kinds of things. We just, it was invaluable to do that as a process. But every adult in the district has taken this practice test, and I encourage you to do it.
Those practice tests are available to any adult.
Anybody, it's an open link. It just happens to not be working right now.
Right, so.
I'll make sure that you get it.
Well, it's gone around in, in various circles, but I, I think that's, it's, it's important to recognize that just school board members might not be the intended audience.
Yes, and I will share with you that when we completed the field test last year, we had Agency of Education folks out, Michael Hawke, the Director of Assessments, and he and I interviewed teachers, we interviewed teachers, but we also interviewed students. And what was very interesting was that a number of them gave feedback that the tasks themselves required them to pull from geometry, pulled from algebra, and problem solve. They felt that it was an integrated test in that way, and that's what we were told to expect. So it was nice to hear students' perspective on that.
Yeah, so just. I know that one score on the standardized test doesn't tell the whole story, but it does tell part of the story. And one of the things that I think is great about this is that, and it was even the idea with the Kneecap, I think, but in a different set of standards. So you have standards now. So the standards-based report cards are pretty good, and the data that we're collecting on those and pumping into our data system is really the thing because then it's broken down, here's all the standards that you're supposed to meet. And so then you know, hey, are we, are you meeting them, right? And then the test is kind of like a way to try to capture a lot of that, right? So how do this, how will the scores work to say that? Because, you know, I think it touches on the other piece of continuous improvement. And I heard you say, and that's one big piece of it, is how students continuously improve. But, so that's great. You could track individual students. But I don't, I don't hear very much, you know, and I don't think that's something we're really good at, is really being clear and developing the system about our whole entire system improves. And so, and for, to do that, you have to be thinking like, okay, here's this thing, and here's my students now. In 10 years, I won't have any of the same students, but I want the system to be better. So I want that group of students to be better than this group of students here. Right, right?
Sback is one of the areas of challenge that we recognize that will be growing.
Right, so we have to build that into the way that we're using this stuff. And this is one piece of it, but it's definitely got to be this comprehensive thing. But, you know, that's got to be how we think about some of these things. And I think it's the general thing is pretty easy to say, right? Well, we have some standards. What, what are we going for? Well, what we, what would be the ideal state? All students meet all standards, right? If, if we're not meeting some of the standards, well, then we're not, we're not doing all the things we need to do. So if you said it the most simple way, that like the, kind of the. So if you said it the most simple way, that, like, that kind of the ideal is all students, well, the ideal is actually all students are exceeding all the standards. Right? We're even better than what the standard is, 'cause that's what everyone should be. Right? So then, I, I can kind of say that in words, okay, but each thing that we look at, that's how we should, that's the way we should be looking at that thing. Well, what do the, what does this 41 mean? Oh, no, no, I know, because 50 is what we say, is it will be when, when we're meeting all the standards in math.
We also talk about assessment results in terms of triangulating. So if S-Back is our new assessment that's gonna give us one lens in a standardized setting, in terms of how a student is doing on numeracy, we are also putting in place, and we have a revised assessment plan, we've revised it every year, but we've revised it, and we'll go in front of educational leadership team next week for their approval. We'll have a local assessment that will tell us how the student's doing on numeracy, and we'll have the classroom teacher work. We're pretty excited about a new math program we're putting in place that has unit assessments that would be able to measure it. In May, I think Judy's invited me to come back to the board and give you some of the data reports that we've been able to pull by taking all of these sort of disparate pieces and putting it in the same data system. It's not perfect. It's still missing some pieces, and we're still working on it, including a pretty significant state assessment that, we'll try to make sense of that in terms of that triangulation, but I think we're getting much closer to that.
I agree.
CTE is one of two technical centers in the state that volunteered to do the testing at CTE, and it was an enormous amount of work to get them their own tide and moving forward, but...
Technical centers are not considered owners of their students, so it was quite a, quite a negotiation, Bob and I, with the state to be able to sort of own that process. Absent that, as you can see with a, with a three-month window, our tech center students could have been gone for three months. It would have been impossible to run a program.
Is there, is there a connection or dovetailing with the S-Back and progress and so forth with colleges and universities? I mean, is it, is there still a relevancy and a motivation issue, I think, at the high school level? So, you know, I'm not sure if it always proves out to, to tell us whether the test takers are fully motivated to help us understand our continuous improvement path. So it's, there still is a, a tough part there. I mean, I, I think at one point in time, we had hoped, and we're actually moving to allowing every single one of our juniors and seniors to take the ACTs in one of those two years, so that everyone will, the entire school, will have that and will norm that out. That's a, that's a test that has multiple functions to it.
And motivation was an issue, you're right, in 10th grade NSRE, and it was an issue in 11th grade Kneecap, and, and it, I imagine will be an issue with S-Back unless something like that changes. Maine had, in place of Kneecap implemented ACT, because they recognized that that was an issue. So we won't know until the students sit. Will higher ed begin to accept some of these data points now that we have more states administering this type of test? Maybe, and that could certainly change some motivations. But 11th grade is faced with an over-testing issue. Spring 11th grade is not a great place to be between our science and Kneecap, all of the tests that they take, that they choose to take, AP and ACT and SAT, as well as this. And then, gosh, we weren't chosen this year, but Fleming was chosen to give the NAEP test, so their fourth-grade students took all of that and, and then some. So over-testing can be an issue.
And those external ones that you talked about, the 11th grader...
Are high stakes for the individual student.
Right.
So that if something has to give, it's probably not gonna be a preparation for an AP that could mean significant dollar resources and application.
I mean, I just, I just took a look, like, we had, you showed Amy the S-Back at, at EHS from April 6th to April 17th, and the ACTs are scheduled April 18th. So if you're an 11th grader, taking it in that timeframe, you're right, you're gonna be test saturated in that timeframe.
And we had to, we had to build this in, in and around assessments.
Right. The SATs happen later on in May, but that type of...
Plan.
Yeah, fatigue, test fatigue.
So are you gonna ga, are you gonna gauge intent? Are you gonna gauge the students outside of the test?
What do you mean by that?
It, it sounds like what you can do is, well, let's look at the test score, see how they are, and then if they're pretty good, well, then we'll say they were, they were motivated. Like, are you gonna gauge their motivation separately? Because then you could just say, oh, look, they basically said they're not motivated. If they, less than 50% are motivated, you know what? That's it. We're just gonna ignore it. And we get, we know we have to focus on things that actually, you know, they got tested on. Because if you, if you try to act like it's real, then, but you know outside, you've really asked them and said, you know, are they motivated? Then what would be the point of putting energy into it?
Well, it's tied to our state funding.
Yeah, we're motivated, but are the, are the test takers motivated?
No, but, yeah, but it doesn't matter.
No, but then...
Then, then we have to do the job to say, no, 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 here's state, here's all the data that says, here's what our students are really like, here's what they're telling us about this test. They're not motivated to take it, and we think that's really real, and we're showing you the data that proves it.
I, I think we won't know, and I, and, and, you know, we've talked about the 46. We won't know when it moves it, and we won't know that it, when it isn't. I will say the adults in the building are taking it quite seriously. They're speaking about it. What I'm witnessing is they're speaking about it in ways that are inspirational to kids. At the end of the day, it isn't the score they bring off to college, and maybe that will change, maybe with, again, with a number of states taking it.
Yeah, yeah. You have to gauge it. It could be, it's okay.
When I went to VSA last week, they, there had been 1,500 tests given so far, and, you know, they told, told an anecdotal story about students after the math test came back to their geometry class, and they were so psyched by the test and the different questions that they wanted to talk about with the teacher. And so they were sharing that these tests, from what we're hearing, are very engaging for students, and they actually wanted to have a conversation about some of the questions. So, you know, those anecdotal questions, as Amy says, we only will know once we administer. And so I'm sure there'll be that kind of, kind of...
Also, I mean, the concept of community in a school and a sense of belonging and making sure that we build in things that bring motivation to students as being part of their community doesn't fix all the problems, but it's not like we're completely hamstrung around motivation either. So I mean, I think there is a balance there about how we do that body of work, that, that we can improve that issue too, right? Depending on what we focus on.
Yeah.
Happy to come back and give you additional updates once we finish the window, and share with you any other anecdotes, and have teachers come and talk to you about it a little bit. It might make sense to do that, maybe in the fall, when we've all finished the window and we have some assessment results to look at. Just very quickly, Judy asked me to give you an update, and Erin and Judy highlighted this a little bit, but this is more sort of, you've had a traditional set of events around school action planning. We wanted to give you a heads up in terms of the way that this has changed, and I'll point to the things that have caused this to change way back when. We gave a new standard reference exam each spring. It was a standardized paper exam. We got the results sometimes late in the summer. And then we did school action planning, which was required under Title 16 in the fall. When we moved Kneecap, or when the state moved Kneecap to the fall, we received our results. Gosh, I think that first year was April, and then they got better. It was March, and now, now about we get it in February. School action planning events tended to happen in the spring. So naturally, without any other changes, we knew with S-Back being a three-month, last three months of school, we were gonna need to change the window of action planning. But another thing happened, and that was your Vermont Education Quality Standards that redefined action planning for us. So I just wanted to highlight this, so that you would understand why traditionally in May or June, you'd be looking at an action plan that you won't be. So these are the sort of drivers here, school action plans, where that, you know, actually language that was in Title 16. The language around it is that it's locally developed, that there's some community engagement around it, that there's some public reporting requirements, school board approved, may have an SU-wide plan or may not. The language a little bit loose there. Plans were never collected by the Vermont Agency of Education. I remember moving to the state and saying, where do I mail them? And they said, they're yours, keep them. We have had school accountability plans. So with the onset of No Child Left Behind, our state is required to have AYP plans in place for our schools. Well, those have changed every year. As our schools were moving from school checkmark one to checkmark two to school improvement one, two, also came different federal and state drivers. So every year, I can witness that even if you stood still at school improvement year one, the type of plan, the timing of when the plan, the framework of what that plan would be, changed. Was it the year we got school improvement grant funds? That year that they said, you get a lot of money, fire your principal? Was it the year that our state adopted a program called Green Mountain Star, which had a set of indicators in it that came from a national organization? Was it the year you were in Green Mountain Star, but they changed the indicators to the MTSS framework? So our principals have been a little bit dizzy around this last piece here. So what they're moving to is a single continuous improvement plan, so that's the good news. The language I have in front of you describes it as, as it's written by Education Quality Standards, but I put some key differences here. It will also be locally developed, both the template and the content, much like school action planning, requires public engagement and reporting, school board approval. There's a requirement for an SU-wide plan, or in the case of, say, for example, a Milton or an Essex district-wide plan. Plans do need to be submitted to the Vermont Agency of Education every two years, and the Vermont Agency of Education will conduct education quality reviews, EQRs. They're in the process of designing what that would look like, and I volunteered to sit on this committee, to ensure compliance to ed quality standards, which, as you know, contains a whole lot of more information other than student assessment results. That's the document that says things like 30 minutes of physical activity for students and so forth. Do you have a data system? Do you have someone to run it? Transitions in terms of timeline, so as I said, each fall, we did Kneecap testing. Results came out February, March. We did school action planning in the spring. Usually, May, June, you'd start to see us coming at you with a school action plan. In good cases, it was two- or three-year action planning. In August, we would get our AYP designations just before school started, so that our principals could then develop AYP plans. So the shift now to this one plan is a little bit of shift in timeline, is that we'll, we'll assess March to June, we'll get our, our assessment results in the summer. In the fall, we'll develop continuous improvement plans. Those will be developed, and then we'll have board adoption. We haven't quite worked it out in terms of, this is new, we haven't seen the assessment results yet. We're working on a template. Our task team has decided to work on one that is similar to what our principals have, have experienced with the two rows being safe and healthy schools and student learning and achievement, but have an attachment to the MTSS framework, so that it can be grounded in the work that we've been doing together. So this is just a quick update in terms of some changes that will be coming your way, and I just wanted to make sure you understood why you're experiencing these changes. Tim?
So this is a really great example of how the way we run the thing gets confusing, because what, what do we build the whole schedule around? One test. It's the only one that matters, right? It, it looks like that's the only one that matters, but we know it's not the only one that matters. We know that it's not. So why are we building it around the schedule? Why, why would we, why didn't you pick another test to build it around? Why don't we build it around just, you know, it could, it doesn't, why does it have to be on a certain schedule? And why does it, we have to wait for the results of one test before we do the thing? Shouldn't all of our information be going into it?
And it should. What's nice about this is that we'll be able to finish the school year, so the third-grade experience will be finished. We can take the local assessment data for the entire three, or, you know, the whole third-grade year, as well as your state assessment, and bring it together. To this point, we couldn't sort of move forward until we had this, that last piece, the state assessment data in there.
Yeah.
I don't, I mean, I, you've seen your action plans. I haven't seen them hinged entirely.
It's better. It's better.
It is better.
Yeah.
Right.
This is a relief, believe me. I think that our principals will examine. I don't know how much of it, those layers that you'd seen that they experienced, but to a certain degree, it felt like we were in school improvement constantly.
Right.
Also trying to do that while ending school.
Right.
Right? This will give the summer to really think about the data across an entire school year, plus the S-Back results, and make a larger picture of data.
Good.
Fine.
The only thing it challenges us with, and it sort of has always been that way, is that it doesn't connect to the budget. So resources and necessities identified in August don't have specific resources identified to them. So in budgeting, we sort of have to be anticipating capacity, the need for capacity to respond, and it needs to be on some reasonable scale, because otherwise, you, you just, in August, you identify what you wanted to do, and then you wait a year to do it, and then you have test results to change what you wanted to do, and you're constantly kind of in that.
So can we move the budget?
Yeah.
We don't do it on time meeting?
You can't...
What's the rules around it?
You have to have an approved budget by July 1st, or you're reverted back to your previous year's authority.
By July 1st.
So today, when we looked at the action plan template, we talked about adding a resource line to that, and that immediately conjured up lots of conversation about some systemic needs we have for resources. So I think we'll be in a better position, just going through this process, process, to prioritize some of those big-ticket things earlier. But I understand.
I mean, I think that we were successful at the U-46 level in giving some discretionary dollars into the principal's office that, that couldn't handle major initiatives, but were an amazing amount of small dollars that could do big things in the area of professional development, or intervention, or opportunity. So, you know, I think sometimes it's just capacity. It's almost not the size of it. It's just having some place to be able to say, geez, if I had $1,000 to pull these teachers together right now, I could probably change the world for these 200 kids. You know, it's that kind of...
I would also say that if we're in a, if we're in a system that needs to be so responsive to an individual test score, I'd worry a little bit about what we're doing in between. We've been, you know, three years in looking at Common Core, we've been in a three, engaged, we just finished, thankfully, a three-year search for a new math program. These things we knew were coming in place, and I think with this assessment, we're gonna need some time to kind of figure out exactly what these numbers mean. But it's the strength of our local assessment. It's teachers being able to sort of respond to, I need a math program if I'm gonna do this right, or the implementation of a new writing program because it doesn't fit the, you know, the standards. I think you'll hear a little bit more of that for a little while. So we, you know, Erin and Judy already said, we've revised our school action plan template or are working on that piece. We will be developing an SU-wide plan that reflects the education quality standards, so that when we do have an education quality review team come, that we'll have it organized in that way. We're working with our school effectiveness coordinator over at the state. We're gonna be looking at S-Back data in August as an educational leadership team, and transition each school over to continuous improvement plans as the current, as it, as it meets the needs of that. I know, for example, the high schools are entering its, I think, its third year of a school action plan, so we don't wanna sort of throw everyone into something new, which is why I'm appreciative that the template looks very similar. But we're gonna need to support them, their transition over to this new system. We're grateful for the state's support and flexibility, that we can create this and we're not handed one new template from the state.
What's the deadline?
Four.
Whatever. The new way of doing it.
There have not been any deadlines set. It's been a, sort of a natural assumption that too many plans with too many deadlines.
Awesome. Right? We should ask for a waiver.
For what?
If there's no deadline, we should ask for a waiver. Let's not do it, because it's gonna be a red.
But we like this. This is a good thing.
Save yourselves the work.
And those of you who've been here a while, when it starts to bring back the continuous...
Continuous improvement plan, one-plan planning framework of, you know, we were...
Yeah, yeah.
Also, no, it was instrumental in ensuring that our improvement coordinator is the same improvement coordinator.
Here with Essex Town Schools, for the first time ever.
I simply mentioned how crazy it was that we had two different school improvement coordinators, and then I found out we have the same now, so.
So for the first time, we have a shared improvement coordinator with Jada DiCaprio.
So I look forward to coming back in May with more data for you. And if in advance you have some thoughts about what you want, any particular reports you'd want to take a peek at, give me some time to make them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so hopefully everyone's had a chance to read through our Act 153 waiver that Judy put together. I didn't receive any questions. I don't know if anybody else, if anyone has any questions.
Try to figure it out.
I think with Judy's explanation, I pretty much got... I think it comes down to one question, but I'll let you go ahead first.
I would just say that Paul O'Brien, who's here tonight, was the author of this document, spent a considerable amount of time preparing it. I think that I can never anticipate how the agency will make a decision around it, but I think it's really grounded in how we currently are showing good faith effort. And while we're in the process of a red, it just doesn't make sense for us to move our teachers to the, our special educators to the SU and to cause that level of disruption, because when the SU disappears, if and when the SU disappears, you'd have to go through another transition, so.
How would you like the motion, Martha?
Where we've got these people as quarter... I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, that's...
But I'm ready to move.
Authorize superintendent.
Just authorize the... To be submitted to the...
Yeah.
So I'll move what Martha just said.
Martha moves to authorize the...
I'd authorize that.
Act 153 waiver request.
Requesting an Act 153 waiver be sent to the Agency of Education.
Okay, so Martha moves.
Well, I'll say it.
Kim seconds. Questions?
Let me get out of discussion.
It has to do with the second to the last paragraph. I think that's the one. Just a second. Let me go back for a second. Was it one? The one section had like a double negative, and I wasn't sure what it meant.
I know in number six I have to change the... Or to an of. I already caught that.
Oh, it's over in the assessment methodology section, so I think we're okay.
Okay. All right.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, so then all vote in favor of the superintendent signing a waiver for Act 153 on behalf of CCSU. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No pose. Motion passes. Nine?
Eight.
Eight. Thank you.
Seven. Erin's on it.
Erin's on this one, though.
It's eight-zero.
It's eight-zero. Erin?
Oh, she's just visiting?
She was a visitor tonight.
Got it.
She would be nine if she was sitting here.
Next up is the continuing saga of the SU assessment methodology.
Yes. So there was just a two-page paper that was included in your orgs. I'm not going to read you everything, but I'm just going to kind of run through it. I mean, the background, just to remind you, was that you had asked me during SU budget development to revisit the SU assessment methodology. I gave you the legal reference, which says unless you otherwise agree to a different method, you should use some kind of a student count. And obviously, we don't right now. The status quo is listed on here, which explains that we use a variety of factors instead of a student count. The problem that we were trying to tackle was the fact that the child nutrition subsidy has been increasing because of the USDA nutrition standards, and there really wasn't a good way to allocate child nutrition subsidy to Westford. Another couple of issues are just that even things like computer devices are getting a little more tricky, because, you know, you've got iPads, you've got Minis, you've got... It's not all just PCs anymore, and it's hard to kind of figure out what you should be counting as a device. And it's, as we all know, the methodology is pretty complex to try to explain. So what I went through was a couple of options. Option one was just maintain the status quo and to exclude Westford for any kind of contribution to the child nutrition subsidy. Problem is, it's still a complex methodology, and it still doesn't, you know, address the issue that we were trying to tackle. Option two is to include Westford in the child nutrition subsidy, but about the only allocation I could come up with was looking at an October 1 student count for just that piece of it. That would increase the amount for Westford pretty significantly, for Westford, and it still is a complex system that we'd be looking at. Option three was to just basically look at the entire methodology and apply the October 1 student count for everything in the SU with the exception of special ed. The only exception would be that I would take about, just shy of about 3% off the top for recreation, because they obviously don't have a count, but they should be charged. So looking at option three, I put a chart in there, and the bottom row of that chart shows what the SU assessment, how the SU assessment compares to this new proposed methodology. You can see U46 would have been about $3,600 less. EJ would have been about $1,700 more, and Westford would have been just shy of $2,000 more. So those were the three options I looked at. I did look at other methodologies, like using ADM, using equalized pupil counts, but the swings were more dramatic. Plus, you have to get into a lot of manual calculations, like Westford equalized pupil is pre-K through 12, so you'd have to back out the 9 through 12 piece. So I didn't list any other options other than those three. My recommendation is to move to option three, which would be to use the October 1 student count. It would be aligned with statute, the kind of intent of the statute. It would be simpler to calculate and explain. It's pretty darn close to what we came up with using the older methodology, and it does allocate some cost, some increased cost to Westford, which we could say kind of applies to child nutrition, because the child nutrition would be just part of the non-special ed costs. So my recommendation was for you to allow me to use option three moving forward, and take any questions or discussions yet.
I've been on this issue a couple of times. I think we shouldn't be using the October 1. As Judy's been saying and seeing, there's a large transition.
You should or should not use...
Should not be.
Okay, I just...
That there's a large transition in students across all of the schools, and that we never know when there's another price increase or something else going on. I know this is speaking specifically to the Westford, but I think the fairest way is a point-of-sale, collecting the data, determining what the real cost is.
I'm a little confused on that, because we also... I mean, right now, the biggest methodology we use of all the multiple things that we do in my spreadsheet that's displayed, the most significant factor we use is percentage of staff, which also fluctuates in...
Yeah, that's true, too.
...in relation to students, so.
Have we taken any data? Do we have any data to show how accurate it is?
Percentage of staff, October 1 count?
So just, I think there's a bit of confusion. Option three is to simplify the entire assessment, not just nutrition services. Right? So doing a point-of-sale analysis addresses just the nutrition portion of it, not everything, which is what you're proposing.
Right.
It comes out the same.
So what you were saying would be basically, would be like an option two, which is to include Westford in the child nutrition subsidy, but not do it based on October 1 count, do it based on a point-of-sale, which means we would have to change our accounting system, because we don't... I mean, all we have is point, we have revenue data as far as point-of-sale is concerned, but we don't have expense data at each location, which is a problem. So, I mean, we could use revenue, but I'm not sure how much that would be different.
And what's the magic used mostly across the SUs in our state?
Well, it is pretty much a toss-up between October 1 count or ADM. Some use equalized pupil, but it's mostly October 1 count or ADM.
Okay.
Brian, you have a comment?
Yeah, I just refreshed my memory. Right now, the split between EJ and U46 for food service, I thought that was on meals served.
It's based on three factors. It's based on student count, revenues, and participation. And it's blended.
Blended.
Okay. And just another clear... Another clarification is, we're good with the internal assessment method that we're using currently between EHS, CTE, U46, and Essex Junction. That's, we're not touching any of those right now?
I wasn't going to play with that. That would be, that would be basically board-level discussions. Like, if you decided that since I'm changing this methodology, you might want to change how you allocate the assessment between high school and tech center?
Yep.
Or between the school district and recreation, Essex School District and Recreation? But it really wasn't intended to change, like, shared service arrangements, and it wouldn't dictate that each district change how they allocate the assessment amongst their schools.
Yep. And are you, are you open to the idea that a student count can happen at any time? October 1 is really a function of that, you know, that's sort of the magic of the state reporting, but it has an awkwardness of like catching up to our budget. If we had a later count towards, towards the conclusion of our budget or in our budget development, we might have a little bit less of a lag. Whereas October 1, just feel like, we're already measuring it, let's just use that number?
It is kind of two things. It's, one thing is it's already measured, and it's a standard count that we have that's accessible. It's also the number that we use for enrollment projections, and it needs to be used and applied for the SU budget.
Which is the first one out. Yep, good point.
The main concern has been the amount of money that this deficit is, or whatever term you call it, it's a shortfall in the difference between revenue and expenses. And if it's growing at $50,000 a year or some number...
No, it's not.
Not that much, but still, $200,000 is a pretty good number.
It's, it was at a higher, I mean, now we're talking about just child nutrition.
Just nutrition again.
Which, it was at a level that was higher. It dropped down because we did some efficiencies, and then it went back up because of USDA standards, and it's basically settling in somewhere between 100 to 150. So it's not something that's been going from 0 to 10 to 50 to 100 to 200 to 500. It's, it was down here, and it graduated up to this level. We dropped it down, and we were pretty standard until this happened, and it went back up. And we're trying to bring it back down again to control it. So I don't, I don't see this as specifically a child nutrition topic. I know we got into it because of trying to figure out how Westford could pay a fair share. But as I looked more into it, it just seemed like it was maybe the right time to just simplify the total assessment methodology, especially whenever I did it, and the totals came up pretty close. I will say that Westford, you know, if we do it based on October 1 counts, Westford isn't increasing, or is probably decreasing at a more dramatic level than the other districts, so this $2,000 in FY16 might only be a $1,500 increase in FY17 because of declining enrollment. U46 is declining, Essex Junction is pretty stable, so, you know, that just kind of tells you where you can expect this to go.
So in other words, Essex Junction's staying stable. They're declining, so Essex Junction's portion, we can expect it to be up every year. That's what you're trying to tell us, right?
I think it won't be as dramatic as it has been, because I think you're pretty stable now with the preschool numbers settling in. But you may still see a little bit of a bump compared to the other ones.
So on this part, though, talking about food, how do we handle the deficit? Is there a way that we're going to attack it for the future? That was part of that whole conversation. Is there something we're going to do to start budgeting money into all the districts' budgets?
I think we should, we would leave it at the SU level, but I think, I think Tim's right. I think it's something we should probably separate from this, if we can. I mean, we, Paul and I and Bob talk about this a lot on where we can continue to shave, but I think we hit that high point, and we kind of are starting to drive it back down again now to the extent that we can. And prices went up this year, right? Prices went up this year. We're tracking participation. It doesn't seem to have dropped down much, so.
But nutrition is in this assessment.
Yes. Everything is, except for special ed.
So this will take care of nutrition on an annual basis.
Whatever the amount happens to be.
Right. It's going to be built in. So then I think the question becomes, what about the deficit that's sitting there prior to doing this?
In our question construct, we talked, we had a, the SU had a lengthy discussion about trying to address that deficit using some, I think it was some fund balance and some other elements that were one-time, and could we take a...
We did from the TAP reserve, and then we budgeted $155,000, which was a little bit more than the actual, what we experienced as a loss in that past year. So the idea was, now that we're up to a level of about $155, even if we don't need that much based on the annual amount that we lost, we would leave it up there to eat into that deficit until we get it back to level again. So I think the increase that we saw going up to $155,000 for FY16, you know, my hope is that that was the high watermark, and that that's more than the annual loss that we're going to see every year. And so eventually, maybe we can actually start bringing it down again instead of continuing to go up.
So we can use it to pay off that prior deficit until it's gone?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks. EJRP is in these numbers. You said something about you took the 2.75% off the top.
I looked at the amount that EJRP has paid based on how much the school, Essex School District and REC, how they allocated the cost. I looked at how much ultimately the REC department has been paying for assessment, and it worked out to be about 2.75 over the past three or four years. So I just decided to take 2.75 off the top. And so if the assessment's growing, the 2.75 would be a higher number. If it's going down, it'll be a lower number, but it'll be 2.75% of the amount we need. I'll take out and say that's REC's piece, and then I'll apply everything else based on just straight October.
So when I say the numbers for Essex Junction School District, EJRP is included in those final numbers?
It is in this, yes. In the total, yes. I added it back in.
Are there any other services that are equally enjoyed by all member districts? Another thing that comes to mind is billing services?
Yeah, you have one person.
Where we do it, we do it in-house.
Yeah, I started getting into that, then I started chasing my tail. Because then I started thinking, geez, you know, Westford uses one-third of my time and pays 7%. So, you know, but you don't use as much of property service. But my assumption is, as I looked at all the different varying factors, I thought, you know what? It's going to normalize. It's settling out. There's only one property services person in the SU, and that person does actually end up having to go out to Westford from time to time, because they manage asbestos management for the whole SU. So you would get a little bit less of the SU, of the property services director's time, but you might get a little more of somebody else's time. So whenever I looked at it, I just thought, you know what? I think it calms down across the way. And there's going to be some people you get more time from, some people you get less time from. But I think that varies from year to year, district to district, too.
We, and the reason I ask simply is because I know it's going to be a question that comes to our board. You know, it's no secret that we're challenged for every dollar anymore, and especially for services that we, they'd be duplicative in our case, right? If we are hiring somebody locally, why not take advantage of more services that we're being assessed for? That's my reason for asking.
Right, and I asked Grant that same question offline. And what I hadn't realized is that the only property service expense that's left in the SU budget is for the person who directs. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't be paying for what's going on in the schools and the other schools in the association. So if it's just the director, I feel like Grant's right, you know? That we probably get more than 6.25% of other people's time, and we could let it come out in the wash for the sake of simplicity, which this is just going to make things a lot more straightforward.
So is it easier and so forth for you over the next one or two budgets? Because that's it. That's all that matters. Right? Really, realistically. If it's easier and so, duh, do what he says. I have support.
Can I make some motion?
Yes, I was going to say, as an action item, we need to make a decision here.
I would like to make the motion that we accept CCSU administration's recommendation of using the October 1 student count to allocate the SU assessment for non-special education.
for non-special education costs for the FY seventeen budget development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second?
Aye.
Any additional questions? All those in favor of the motion to use the October first student count to allocate the SU assessment for non-special education costs fiscal year seventeen budget development? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes eight zero.
Set nine.
Nine zero? Nine zero now, thank you. Thanks, Grant.
I think it's still eight zero, cause Aaron isn't officially on the CCSU board.
Oh, alright.
Okay, you're missing a Westford person.
My mistake, I was discounting them, thank you.
Okay. Our other vote was eight zero two.
Got that one.
It wouldn't let anybody vote. Sorry.
Do you want a motion for the policies and then we discuss them? I move that we accept for the first reading G eight D, G ten, and also the removal of policies JA dash two thirty, JA, J E C B A, J E H, J F B, J G A, J G F, J H C A, J H C D dash E one.
Is there a second?
One second.
Brian got the second.
Oh.
Alright, so. Discussion on, on the policies at first reading. Martha?
Um, I just wanna double check that my understanding is correct that for the ones that we're getting rid of, they're covered elsewhere in the policy manual.
Or, or they're, or they're unnecessary. So they're either duplicative, they're unnecessary, or they're items that are better to be handled by procedure than by board policy.
Okay.
Um, but I, but I wanna stress that it would be very good at our local board level to understand that there's a motion to be removing these policies and for members to, you know, it might be good not to have this as a consent process and, and have it be something that people are thinking about. Because the policy committee sort of feels that if we're moving too fast and any one of these needs to be restated, removed, or, or moved back into policy, then we wanna do that. But this is, this is our recommendation as a policy committee.
And it's so important because it's really the cornerstone of your work, which is why I invited Deb Robbins to be here tonight. Because the depth of, of that, um, new healthcare policy is something that she could answer your questions if you had a chance to really begin to assimilate. It's really framed after the presentation she provided for you earlier.
As you said, she did it for us last time.
Yeah, so she wasn't.
This is putting it into.
Into policy and procedure. And Paul, of course, is the chair. In fact, the whole team, the whole CCSU team was here tonight. Grant just asked to scoot out, but, um, just to show you the team effort in doing this set of orgs, which is quite comprehensive and all aligned to your annual work plan.
So, I, I mean, I think this is, um, might be helpful just to set the scene before the motion is made. Um, that the SU Policy Subcommittee, um, met. There was full representation by all three boards, which is a requirement for us to take action. Um, we reviewed and had the ability to have a, um, a presentation by Deb. And we went over, um, the terminations policy is, uh, an amount of, kind of falls a little bit into some administrativeness to kind of create better symmetry and likeness between different bargaining groups and non-bargaining groups. So that one's pretty basic.
Yeah.
The second one, um, for the healthcare compliance is anything but basic.
Right.
Um, we received the same presentation that I think was to the SU the last time. Um, and the policy committee felt very comfortable that what was being suggested as far as policy would put us in a good position as far as an SU. Um, and the ones that are being recommended for removal is just the beginning. There's a, a re-energizing of going through our policies and addressing, um, some that have not been reviewed in a while. So I think you can anticipate, um, a good amount of action coming out of the committee. So that we, um, and, and the bias is to lean towards procedure when possible and not to be redundant. Um, if the state, if there's a state law that requires us to do it, then our statement is that we comply to state law rather than just having more redundancy of policy that restates it. Did I leave anything else, Paul? Paul did not provide pizza at the last meeting.
Really? It's because you were talking about healthcare compliance.
Marla?
It's probably a crazy question, there's probably a good answer for it, but the very ending of the policy, G eight D, D as in David, the very last page I have has first reading five twenty-four ten adopted. Then another first reading revised three twenty-five thirteen, the adopted revised date. Is that supposed to even be there?
No, I think the May, the May date should have been removed at the last reading.
So the first reading is five twenty-four ten, nine twenty-seven ten, and remove the next first reading?
Remove the, the May of two thousand ten and then September two thousand ten.
Oh, okay.
There'll be a new first reading as of today and then the adoption will be in May. So that edit will appear, that edit will appear the next meeting, the next reading.
Any other questions, comments, concerns?
So I, I'd like to make a motion that, um, those policies at first reading.
There's already been a motion.
Oh, have we?
The motion started, you seconded it.
And you seconded it. I had, I had a.
That, that, that motion remain on the floor. Come on, guys. Just identifying you.
Alright, all those in favor of accepting the policies as moved for first reading? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes eight zero.
Good night, Deb, thank you for coming.
Good night, Paul.
So I do have a comment, it wasn't about the motion, so I wanted to wait till after, but it's about policies. Now I'm gonna try to save us some work. So, how, you know, did the policy committee already talk about how to streamline, you know, streamline the work? You know, anything that's just riding, you know, if it hasn't been reviewed in seven years, what's another year? You know, right? And just don't bother because it's all gonna get obliterated and have, it's gonna have RED policies.
Yeah, but.
So, so there are required policies, there's, there's required policies up, updates. So definitely we gotta do those, but like, you know, we could, you know, tactically choose and be like, well, if we have to, after a vote in November, well, then we can come back to it all and just start.
We did discuss that.
If we need to keep going, great, but otherwise, let's save ourselves the work.
I believe that's what we're doing.
Well, we'll certainly be informed along the way what happens with the RED and stuff. There's, there's a number of policies particularly in, um, high-touch areas like students and in some others.
That need attention.
That need attention.
Okay.
Great, great.
Just thinking, right, if you adopt, if, if you go out to the RED, Essex is in policy governance. You, you just adopt policy govern, the RED wants to adopt policy governance. It's just like, whole thing goes away. Just thinking about what, what, thinking about what could happen.
Alright, so just to be clear, right, the, the RED is in study now. And there's no predeterminations of what's gonna happen. So we need to, we need to move forward planning for the future we know with an eye towards the future that may be. Cause there's just as many chances that legislative action will move us in the same or a slightly different direction. So.
Well, no, and I think that's what we see is legislative action is only agreeing with that direction. And so we can see that really something is gonna happen in that direction, one way or the other. And maybe not, you know, in the, you know, it might not be three years, it might be five years. But I'm, that's all I'm saying, with everything we're doing, we just have an eye on that.
It's still an act of the voters that's gonna make it happen. That's what I guess I wanna just be very clear on, this is.
Of course.
Alright, let's move on to, um, the Leaders at Work as, you know, we've finished up the first draft for the, uh, the annual work plan. Um, board chairs have put it out to, to everyone to get feedback. Um, we took the feedback we received and put it into place at the last Leaders at Work meeting. This is a chance for any last-minute questions, concerns to, uh, to bring up, I guess. Prior to the next Leaders at Work meeting, that basically will finalize what's going to be presented to the SU board and voted on.
And the SU board's next meeting where that'll be voted on is the end of May, I believe.
Right.
So.
So this is kind of following the same structure. Um, in theory, as policy, we wanted, we've worked on it, we're presenting it for, you know, somewhat of a first reading, but, you know, for questions.
Yes.
Um, with the intent of bringing it back for adoption. Now, this is an opportunity for, uh, to, to affect some discussion at the next Leaders at Work meeting if we need to make tweaks.
I think on the annual work plan, just to let people know, we've, I think, got around a little bit about putting dates and, uh, levels of responsibility in. And then as a committee, when we discussed it, I believe we decided not to do it. And, um, a couple of members had very good reasons why.
Yeah, I guess then, I mean, just kind of related to that, I mean, that's my only comment, I think, about it is, is it, is the lead, is it, who's, who does the evaluation? The executive committee? Who's really gonna do the evaluation to this annual work plan? If the executive committee is confident that they can do an evaluation on it, then no, did this stuff get done? And did it say, did it get done when it was supposed to get done? Then it's good. If you're not clear that, well, it's too soft, like it, it says we're gonna work on something. Well, then, uh, do I, can I do a good evaluation on that? I mean, I think it's up to the executive committee to say, you can do a good, meaningful evaluation. You know, apparently there was some discussion in committee about, you know, what.
Right, because all three chairs are on the committee.
Right.
Right, so.
We've gone through, um, we've gone through what might be considered, you know, a pilot year of this particular form with the entire loop of the process being executed.
Yep.
And, um, we've taken a great deal of the lessons learned and moved them kind of into this process. You'll notice that even in the org notes, um, the things we're doing have the correlations to the annual work plan highlighted in there. Similarly, the collection of evidence is something that's occurring during the year rather than at the end where, you know, many times you'll, it is difficult to go back or, or it's easy to miss something or, you know, concentrate on what was the last thing that we dealt with. So by systematizing that, we are, I think, relieving one of the, one of the bigger challenges and that was to do a comprehensive evaluation within a given structure and timeline.
Yeah.
So we understand the structure. The timeline now hopefully can be addressed by the fact that it's something we have, we, we live and breathe every meeting. And we collect data throughout the course of time. And the data is not going to be, uh, anything different than the very same org notes and pieces of information that we've dealt with in the meetings. So it, it isn't just asking Judy to summarize. It is, we are looking at the source material to determine whether or not, and the questions we ask about, how is implementation going? Are we on schedule?
It's providing focus for the strategic needs of the district. And it's the first time we've gotten clear. Chairs have taken their needs, negotiated the priorities, and have handed them off to the superintendent. And clarity in what needs to be done, specific dates, evidence gathering. It's a solid process. It works. And Judy, you, you can say anything more about it that you'd like, but I, I think, uh, definitely on the right track.
I think the one thing that's frustrating with the annual work plan is we really learn to see a little more consolidation, less items on it. And there are so many things that have to be done. I mean, the, all the curriculum work, everything. So there are some things you'll notice if you look at it in color. We added the color black, black, uh, just to let you know means that we expect the superintendent, they're still doing it. But it's, uh, an expectation that's there. So instead of a new piece added, so.
We're not looking to generate more work. To do a, um, evaluation, that's why, that's why it's imperative that we look at the existing evidence rather than ask for new evidence. And have that, have it speak for itself. There's no interpretation, we either did it or we didn't.
Right, well said.
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful.
So we, we need a motion.
I think it's May.
For what? For the consent agenda, yep.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I was.
You were, you were typing when I gave that speech earlier.
I was looking ahead.
So, uh, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Martha.
And each item has to be listed in the motion?
Um, yes, do we need to say it out loud? So the consent agenda is?
No, you can just, you can just write it in the motion consisting of.
Okay.
We could say it out loud, approval of the warrants, approval of the meeting minutes of January twenty-sixth, approve of the extension of transport, of transportation contracts, issuance of contracts, and authorizing the superintendent to sign an MOU with Essex Town.
Well said by Martha. Is there a second?
Paul seconded.
Second by Marla. Any further discussion? None? All those in favor?
No discussion.
I discuss.
Aye.
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 Can't discuss the consent.
At what point do you, do you pull, do you pull minutes then? Does it, you do that beforehand?
I usually, yeah.
Okay, alright.
When I was chairing the meeting, my first question usually was, does anyone wanna pull anything from the consent agenda? And then if not, then you can ask.
Any future agenda items?
We wouldn't be shy about speaking up after.
I've been here a couple, couple of times. Future agenda items?
Alright, future agenda.
Amy's coming back to share some data from our data assistant.
We'll have to formally approve the CCSU budget.
Okay. Um, don't we do a reorg next meeting?
That's the reorg meeting.
It's a venture, right?
I think it's towards the end of May.
Yes.
Some years I've been lucky, it falls on my son's birthday and he flies in from Virginia, it's special. So I'm here at meetings.
Okay, so I have approved AWP, approved CCSU budget, reorg, um, update from Amy.
Second data.
On data.
Okay.
May twenty-sixth.
We might, we might want to, what's the word? Something, the legislative session.
Oh, review?
Repeat?
I was thinking of a, a worse word, but yes.
Critique?
Mourn.
Well, how about, how about legislative session repercussions?
That's good.
That's a good word.
I like that one.
And do you wanna, do you wanna, are we gonna do that on our individual boards? Do you wanna do the same for like budget, the whole, that will be after all of our budget votes?
Yeah, well.
Well, we'll, we'll do that probably as part of approving the SU budget. We'll probably review.
Oh, it'll be during that, where we'll talk about budget. Yeah, good idea.
And policies second reading.
And policies, second reading.
And, um, okay, so that's all the items?
Third reading.
You guys pick them?
Marvel show.
Okay, well, since this is, uh, Jack's last SU meeting, I just want to thank, thank Jack for, for all of his, his efforts on the SU Board, uh, for his, his leadership and for any of his guidance and just to appreciate, uh, everything you've brought to, to this board.
Well, thank you, Michael. I said this same thing at the U-46, the last meeting too. It's, it's an honor to work with each and every one of you and the commitment that you have to our students and to our schools. You always hope when you leave a place, you, you leave it in a better place than when you found it. And in the case of CCSU, I look at the strides that we made in, uh, climate assessments and, uh, collaboration between our districts. Um, I think we've, we've made some market improvements and, you know, more, more to come and I wish all of you well in your future work here on CCSU Board and thank you.
Thank you.
One of my first years back on the board, Jack was chair and the work you do is phenomenal.
No, thank you.
It's a lot. It's good, very well.
Again, thank you. With that, we are adjourned.